Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Winterville Town Council meeting tonight. Today is Monday, December the ninth, 2024. The time is now at six oh one. Tonight's invocation will be given by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell. And after the invocation, we will stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would bow your heads, please. Our Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for all the things that you have done for us and for our families and for our community. Thank you, God, for the town of Winterville, for our staff, and for this amazing council. Thank you for the wisdom to make decisions that will enhance our community. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Could y'all please stand and face the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. My name is Ricky Hines, the mayor. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and also the ones that are watching us through streaming mechanism. Next, we will have our roll call by Town Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. If you would denote your presence through our voting software, that would be appreciated. Well, it doesn't want to work this evening. Give us one moment. Maybe it took a vacation.
We've got a full agenda tonight. All right.
Let's try again.
Let's try it again.
Yeah, I can't tell if it's an A or an R.
Okay, well, we'll go the old-fashioned one. All right.
I'm going to read directly off this slide, so I'll start with Councilwoman Johnny Moy.
Present.
Councilwoman Lisa Smith.
Present.
Councilwoman Chantel Hawkins.
Present.
Councilwoman Veronica Robertson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brandy Harrell.
Present.
And Mayor Hines.
Present.
We have a full house, all present and accounted for.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. If there's not any corrections.
Mayor, if I may, you all have an amended agenda at your seats, so we would be asking that you approve that amended agenda accordingly as presented. Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay. I have a motion made by Councilwoman Robertson, second by Councilman Johnny Moore, to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any questions before I'll for the vote?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of an amended agenda, when is the latest time and hour that one can be presented to amend the agenda?
Usually amended agendas historically have been at a staff level prior to the deadline. I don't recall, of course, if we have public comments that are turned in, we add those, obviously. And usually staff agenda, I mean, staff amendments will relate to if we have additional information on an item we're discussing. I'm trying to go over certain circumstances. We have had council folks add items, but it's really unusual. So we've really tried to stick to the deadline if at all possible. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted to ask that because at this late we typically get an email for an amended agenda, and this was just presented, so that was just the premise of my question. Thank you.
Ms. Parker? Yes.
On tonight's agenda, if this clarifies anything, the only additions or changes to make it amended are additional public comments and one additional recognition, staff recognition. There were no business items that were changed.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Don.
All right, if we could, Willie, is the software still? Okay, all right. Could we vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. All right, next up is recognition of employees.
Mayor, we've got several, and I'm excited because I have not met several of you this evening. But if I could ask the following folks to come to the podium, it may expedite time. So I'm going to ask everybody to come forward and then have the department heads come up and introduce their respective folks. Does that sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, if I could have Tamika Stevens, Andrew Jones, Anthony Smith, Brandon Smith, John Casey, Haley Camden, Elena Head, and Michael Hobbs to step forward. What a distinguished-looking bunch of folks. I would like to say welcome, and we'll start with Jessica Manning, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'd like to introduce Tamika Stevens. She is our new Customer Service Representative in the Finance Department. She comes to us from Greene County. She has over seventeen years of experience in customer service. We're happy to have her, and we're looking forward to working with her.
Thank you for having me. I'm honored to be here. I'm just excited about coming on board with the town of Winterville.
Thank you. Could, if y'all could, could we just wait to the end and just do an applause for everyone, if y'all don't mind, please? Cliff?
Yes, sir. Evening, Mayor and Council. You guys step forward, please. With us, we have Mr. Andrew Jones. He's one of our equipment operators in Public Works. He comes to us from Pitt County Schools. We have Mr. Anthony Smith. He's a utility pump maintenance mechanic. He comes to us from Nutrien. And Mr. Brandon Smith comes to us from the private sector in an electrical company. He is one of our utility pump maintenance mechanics. And if any of you gentlemen want to speak, that's fine. If not, that's fine, too. Thank you. Just want to say I appreciate this opportunity.
Just happy to be here and join the team.
Pretty much the same thing that these two guys, right, as said. Appreciate the opportunity to give me a job of employment.
Good evening, Mayor, Miss Terry, council ladies and men. This is John Casey. He's comes from private sector contractor. He's got over twenty years of experience, and he's going to make a great addition to the Lecture Department, and we're glad to have him.
Just like to say, Mayor and council members, that I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve Winterville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We've got Haley Camden. She's our new old paramedic. She's worked for us for quite a while, part-time, and she's now full-time as of this month, and she comes with a wealth of experience. And Elena Head, she comes to us from the medical sector in three months. I don't remember the exact date, but she's been doing a fantastic job also, so let's welcome her.
Hello, nice to meet you. I'm excited to continue caring for the community in Winterville. I've been here for a long time, and I like it. Thank you.
It's nice to meet everyone, and I'm very happy to be here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sergeant Michael Hobbs has been with the town for fourteen years and been in investigations ten years, so he's a little different from the other folks. Recently, Sergeant Hobbs, well, I won't say recently, for a very long time now, Sergeant Hobbs has been working toward what's called a Criminal Investigation Certificate. It's nearly five hundred hours of study. It covers anything that you've seen on NCIC, fingerprints, body decomposition, crime scene analysis, crime scene photos, all these things. He mastered these, passed a final exam, and was awarded his Criminal Investigation Certificate. It's no easy thing. Less than thirty people have earned it in the last eight years in eastern North Carolina. And just to give you an example of some of the work that Sergeant Hobbs does, recently, his hard work led to the solving of the attempted murder on Jeremy Lane, which also tied into the murder Greenville had at Planet Fitness. And he was instrumental in solving both those crimes, although we know who was on the news about it. And then most recently, there was a Venezuelan gang running up and down the eastern seaboard, stealing hard drives out of ATMs. They wanted the information, not the money. And Sergeant Hobbs was instrumental in identifying those vehicles, which led to the identification of the perpetrators. They have not been caught yet, but there are outstanding warrants. So his body of work is top-notch, and we are very glad to have him.
I just want to say thank you to the town of Winterville, Chief Williams and Lieutenant Rabey. They always provide guidance and opportunity. And also my coworkers, they push you when times are down and give you a little bit of encouragement.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to all the men and women that have chosen to come here to work in the town of Winterville. For me, I always consider us one big family. So if you all could give them a round of applause now. Welcome to the town of Winterville. Okay, next up is appointment of Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to nominate Councilman Johnny Moy.
Anybody? Anybody else? Would you like to nominate anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Per our policies and procedures, the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem is when someone is elected and sworn in. Is that correct?
If you read the town charter, it clearly states there is no term for our Mayor Pro Tem.
I believe it states that it occurs at the organizational meeting, which is in December. And when there's an election, obviously, there's a protocol for how things are done. But there's no specificity directed towards when the Mayor Pro Tem is reelected or elected. And I think in more recent years, we've been doing it annually at the December meeting.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, just because, and you know, all of this is is fine, but I just want to make sure that we are going by Rule Three, as you said, in our policies and procedures on page two, in accordance to Rule Three, where it does state, yes, the first regular December meeting, a general election in which the Board of Aldermen are elected. That's what I am referring to.
Yeah.
And so we're not following this procedure? Or, I mean, help us to understand that. I just want some education.
Maybe we need to clarify and get the two things in line. Our town charter says one thing.
And our policies say one thing.
And that says enough.
To date, correct me, King, if I'm wrong, but the charter would...
The charter is part of our Code of Ordinances, so the charter would preempt, if you will, any other document, any other policy. I think the charter references the fact that the Mayor Pro Tem serves at the pleasure of the Board.
It does say that.
And it also references the organizational meeting, which, of course, happens after each election. So it would be, you know, there was an election in November, but there was no municipal election. So the next organizational meeting we would have would be, I guess, after twenty-five.
Right.
So there is, I guess, the potential for a conflict there to decide which one trumps and which one carries the day. However, it's, in my opinion, the council can vote at any time it would wish to address the Mayor Pro Tem matter, so the council wanted to pick it up. They could, I guess, tonight or wait till the next, to the next December.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And as you said, it is a conflict because the charter says one thing, and our policies and procedures say another thing. So who makes the decision of what trumps what? And I just want to make sure so we all would know, and so we all can follow, as if any other policy comes up, what trumps what, and who makes that decision?
The charter would be the document that has the most force or would be the one that we would look to. It's the primary document that sets out what the town should do. Policies, though, should be consistent with that. I think maybe we need to look at going to the policy and maybe put in the policy either something that the council could vote every December and make it an annual thing and put it in there to say so. Or the other is to say, no, it's just going to be done after the election, after the organizational meeting, after an election, so that would be every two years.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to clarify that this is not a staff-driven item, so just so the whole council just understands this was...
Right, well, in the spirit of transparency of what we're trying to do for the entire town, that was, you know, the premise for my question, because our policy says one thing, and then the charter says another thing. So I just want to make sure that we are all on one accord.
And I agree, we should get both of them in line and make it consistent.
And assuming no one has, since we're talking about the policies and procedures, if I may, assuming no one has any issue, staff will go ahead and start drafting updates because we still have the term Alderman in there.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
We need to date that. And aside from our discussion on this item tonight, anything else that we see in conflict will make changes according to what the charter says, but we'll then provide that draft to council, and then you all can go through it and decide if you'd like to see any additional change. Does that sound okay?
That sounds wonderful, but I would just like to go back to the council had a similar discussion about this via Rule Twenty with vacancy of the Board and election and municipal election. So I would encourage us as a council to look clearly at the verbiage in both the policy and procedures as well as the charter, clearly and throughout. We did this at the beginning of last year or the beginning of the year after the last election, and it would behoove us to do this so that we are accountable for what takes place moving forward, as opposed to continuing to go back around the circle. And this verbiage is very, very important. It is law.
Okay, so what is the, what is the wishes tonight? Do we move forward, or do we table this? I'm looking for some answers. And I'll throw this out. If there's going, if there's a motion made to for someone to, for someone to act as the Mayor Pro Tem, in other words, to change the Mayor Pro Tem, I think what we would need to do is to have a vote by the council to address that issue. Like, yes, we want to discuss this matter, and once the council, so you have to have the majority vote to pick that up. Once that is approved, then we would move into the actual vote to replace. Does that make sense?
Let me get it right now, for me. So right now, we do have, we have a motion on the floor right now for Johnny Moy as Mayor Pro Tem.
Nomination.
Nomination for Johnny Moy. So that's all we have right now.
Correct.
So is there a way to make a motion to table until the conflict of the policies and the charter? And then we vote clearly for Mayor Pro Tem? Because if there's a conflict in the policy and the charter, I think that we need to have those policies and procedures in line before we move on with voting for whomever.
The council has the, I think, the right at any time to address appointments and to address who serves as Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm not opposing the appointment. I'm talking about the inconsistency.
Right, but what I'm saying is, since they have the right to do that, there's a motion. I think if that motion's withdrawn or the nomination is withdrawn, then you could make a motion to table it, to bring back something new next month, and then we would, I guess, pick this up next month. So we would withdraw the nomination and then a motion to fix the inconsistency. Or if there's a motion to say we want to have a vote tonight, then there could be a vote.
Right.
If I may, a point of clarification. It is my understanding that the charter would have more power, for lack of a better word, over what is in the policy and procedure. So if that's the case, it wouldn't make any difference to put it off because we would have to go change the charter. What really would have to happen is that the policy and procedure would have to come into alignment with the charter.
Correct.
So with that being said, and the council has already brought this to the agenda, I feel like we should move forward, and then we should look at aligning the policy and procedure to the charter, which would supersede policy and procedure. Does that make sense?
And I remember once before, we talked about changing the charter. And I was led to believe then, and if I remember correctly, if we change the charter, it has to go to the legislature.
Right. Well, there's two ways to change the charter. One is a charter amendment that takes place locally right here. And the statute is very clear. There's a number of hurdles you go through, and you have a public hearing. And then ultimately, it has to be approved by the Department of Justice. Or the other route is to go straight to the legislature, get a local act from the legislature, and let them change it. There's two routes.
Thank you.
And the concept of electing the Mayor Pro Tem every year is to give members, all members of the council, an opportunity to serve. Prior to us doing that, some people just served all the time, and others on the Board were denied that privilege. And that's why we were elected each year. I was elected, the mayor was elected, Mayor Pro Tem during, as a result of one-year terms. But it's just to allow our people on our council the opportunity to serve.
So right now, we, clearly, again, we have a nomination on the floor.
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Robertson, you made the nomination.
Yes, I did.
All right, do you want to carry forth?
Yes.
Right, the next thing would be a motion if we don't have another person. If anybody don't want to nominate anyone else, then we'll move forward with a motion, correct, King?
Well, you asked, you've got one nomination. I think you've asked if there's any other nominations. And then if there's not, then you would close the you would close the nomination, and then we would still have to have a vote on that.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear and making sure people in the audience understand what's going on, okay?
Mayor, I know we have a motion on the floor.
No, 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 a nomination.
A nomination, excuse me, excuse me, let me retract. Mayor, I know that we have a nomination on the floor. Is there any room for any other discussion, or is that closed at this time?
No, we're still in the discussion phase right now.
Okay, okay. Okay, so my comment is that we all clearly are aware that there is a discrepancy between the charter and the policy and procedure. And I understand that we want to give everybody the opportunity to serve as Mayor Pro Tem, but there is a discrepancy, and we're ignoring the discrepancy, and, you know, and I, you know, that's not my feelings about Councilman Moy because I have a great respect for him. I do. But there is a discrepancy, and we're just, okay, there's a discrepancy, and we're still going to move on, and we're going to deal with it later. That's what happened with Rule Twenty when I ran in 2021, and there was a Mark Smith left his seat, and Rule Twenty said the person that was elected, the next person should have went in, but that was changed. And so what we're doing is doing the same thing, and there's a clear discrepancy. And I understand the verbiage and articulation and everything else, but we are ignoring a discrepancy and moving forward, and then we're going to fix it later. That's like we see a hole up in the street. We're going to run over that hole and bust our tire and worry about fixing it later. So that is my comment. And again, I have great respect for Councilman Moy, but these things that are broken need to be fixed before we continue to move forward. That's my comment.
Well, I'm just commenting on the Rule Twenty part of it for clarification. The Rule Twenty was handled in the proper fashion because I, at the time, was a councilperson, won the mayor's seat, and the next in line was then, at that time, because we had just had a general, our election, was Paul Rice. So Paul Rice took that seat. And then there was not another election at that time, so therefore, we didn't have an election. And Mark Smith won the county commissioner's seat, but we didn't have an election. So until we had an election, we couldn't fill that seat with someone else. So we had to go to the public and all that because basically Rule Twenty was actually done like it's supposed to have been done. It was filled by the person that ran in our election at that time, and that was Mr. Rice. So, you know, I think there's a misconception, and everybody can, I mean, each and every one can spin it their own way, but the rule worked at that time. And, you know, right, we might need some clarification? Yes, I agree. But at the time, the rule worked as presented. Now, going back here to the nomination, Ms. Robertson did state that we would like to make sure that everyone on the Board has an opportunity to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. Now, prior to Dr. Harrell was Mr. Moore, was Mayor Pro Tem at the time. So I'm just trying to get it out there so everybody knows. Because if you're saying that you want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to serve, and if you look at it from that standpoint, then the two people that haven't served that's on this board at this time is Councilwoman Hawkins and Councilwoman Smith that haven't served at this time.
At the time that I brought that to the council, that was my intention.
Yes.
That was why I did it because, of course, I had been on the Board about fifteen years. And I had not had the opportunity to serve in that position, nor Mr. Moore. He was on the Board with me, and both of us served over fifteen, sixteen years, and we were not... able to serve because it had been the tradition, which is not a rule, that the person with the longest term. And there were people on the board who had longer terms than we did. And, you know, when people are already ahead of you, it's hard to catch up. So.
May I ask King Attorney Laster a question? So to address some of the concerns by fellow council members, would it be appropriate to make a motion to, in this case, in regard to the Mayor Pro Tem, make the policy and procedure align with what the charter says? Can that be done or how, what is the process for that?
Yeah, I I think that's probably the direction we're going is to to make the the procedure, or the, I'm sorry, the policy that's in your policy manual consistent with the charter. Now, we can add language to it to say distinctly that the if if the council wishes that every December, there's a vote on Mayor Pro Tem to see if it, you know, they would like to address who serves as Mayor Pro Tem and have an annual vote. We can put that in there so it's then very clear that it's not every two years, but every year.
Okay, that vote should be made at this time?
I I I think it can. I mean, it just depends on whether y'all want us to to draft something up and bring it back for you to look at or whether you're comfortable enough in the change and and vote on it and make it happen tonight. We would have to, you know, of course, type it up and bring it back and get it signed later.
But right now, the question is that we have a nomination on the floor. And if if no one else has any more nomination, I'm gonna close the nomination. Okay? If there's no other nominations, I'm.
I'd like to nominate myself.
Okay. All right. Is there any other more, any other? Sorry about that. Is there any more nominations on the floor? Yeah.
Can we nominate more than one person?
Can can one person nominate more than one person? No, I think one person only votes, nominate once.
I'm sorry. All right. Again, said for the final time, is there any more nominations?
Is there any more discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to Rule 20, in the policy and procedure, it says, when a vacancy occurs on the board, the seat will be filled by the candidate from the previous municipal election with the next highest number of votes. Paul Rice was, took took, who is now Mayor Hines's seat. And when Mark Smith left, Chantel Hawkins was the candidate with the next highest votes from the previous election. It's right here in the rules. It's right here. So that is what I'm speaking to. And so when it's brought up, I like to go to the facts. That is what was not acknowledged. And again, I had nothing against those who went forward, what was constructed for them. But if we're going to do rules, we need to do rules in what the verbiage says. And that is my discussion on that. And we can continue with the nominations.
All right. If there's no other nominations, I've now officially closed the nominations. And we have two people on the ballot. And we are going reverse order, correct?
I I think customary is to 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 go through in the way that they were nominated. So you start with the first nomination. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll start with Mr. Johnny Moore. You got a clicker. Is the clicker working now? Is the clicker working?
It is. I don't know that we, okay, the slide ready. There we go.
All right, all right. Okay, if you could please. All right, we have three for Mr. Moore. All right. Next person up is Dr. Randy Harrell. Hold on. For you. Let him get the slide up.
I'm glad he's doing it.
Wait, wait, wait. He ain't got it up yet. Now, can you please vote for Dr. Randy Harrell? Are we working? Technology. Hold on for a second. You can try it again. But y'all can vote now. Not working. All right.
Will you do hands, please?
All right. That's why I'm gonna do show your hands. All in favor of Dr. Randy Harrell, please raise your right hand. Two. All right. All opposed, raise your right hand. Three, two. Randy Harrell had two, four, and three against. So let me make sure I'm right now. Right, King? So that makes that's correct. Councilman Moore, Mayor Pro Tem. That's, yes, sir, that's correct. All right, okay. All right. Now, Councilman Moore, you are the new Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you allowing me to represent this wonderful town one more time as the Mayor Pro Tem. That's the only thing I can say is to say thank you. I can say a lot more, but thank you.
All right. Before we move on from this here, now we need some, a motion to be made to get this policy and procedure, all this corrected. To get the staff to correct.
So I would like to, okay.
I see. It's it's, and I'm I'm repeating myself, so I apologize. It's it's completely up to you. You can make the motion tonight and vote on it tonight and we'll just type it up and bring it back to you so you see it next month, but you would be approving it tonight. Or we prepare something and bring it back next month. It's whichever way y'all, yes, I defer to.
What what is the?
If I may, I thought we, I thought council basically had, we had a consensus that you all would want staff to go in and make the applicable changes to the rules of procedure that need to be made, i.e. alderman change to town council, et cetera. Address this specific item, which unless you all word it differently, will will make it match the charter. And then get it out to you in draft form and you all can certainly make changes. Then we bring it back for council. But did I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't on a different page than council.
Is everybody fine with that situation?
Yes, that's fine.
Everybody, y'all understand what she said? Everybody's fine with that?
Yes.
Y'all fine with that?
We will have a draft out to council before the January meeting. And then you all can direct us accordingly as to whether it's ready for a vote or not.
Okay, all right. All right. All right. Next up is a presentation. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four audit. Ms. Jessica.
Good evening again. Tonight, we have Mr. Austin Eubanks here from Thompson Price Scott and Adams and Company from Wilmington. He's here to present the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year audit. Each year, we contract out an audit firm to audit our funds to ensure they are accounted for correctly and also make sure that we have the proper controls in place. So I'll hand that over to him.
Before you begin, turn to page nine of your audit report to the Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Dunn, North Carolina. Page nine of the booklet.
In the book.
Yeah.
I'll fix that and get it to you shortly.
We did have several different drafts. We had some corrections that went back and forth and it could have just gotten mixed up in one of the old drafts.
I'll get that, uh, draft updated, uh, sent over tomorrow. My name's Austin Eubanks. I'm the Audit Manager at Thompson Price Scott and Adams in our Wilmington office. I do hold my CPA certification and Certified Fraud Examiner certification. And we did have the pleasure of auditing Town of Wonderville for the fiscal year in June 30th, 2024. And I'll just go straight through our required communications. Our responsibilities fall under the generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards, OMB Uniform Guidance, and the State Single Audit Implementation Act. We were able to design and provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material error and in compliance with government regulations. We were, we had, uh, we were able to perform all our planned procedures and have complete access to both management and required information. There was a prior period adjustment this year, and that was the only significant deficiency in internal control, and I will go over that at the closer to the end of the presentation. There was no new adoption or changes in accounting policies that affected the Town of Wonderville this year. Our management's judgment, judgments and accounting estimates were deemed reasonable and as they should be. The financial statements and disclosures were considered neutral, consistent, and clear. And we did not have any significant audit adjustments or unrecorded differences. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did not have outside consultation with any other CPA firms. We had no prior retention issues. We did not have any difficulties while performing the audit. We did not find any irregularities or illegal acts or other financial issues. So jumping right into the numbers, the total revenues for the general fund and so total revenues and other financing sources, you collected $12,883,000. Your total expenditures was $11,651,000, giving you a positive net change of 1.2 million. One of the metrics that LGC likes to utilize is a minimum undesignated fund balance for the expenditures. And for a town your size, it would be right at 25% of your expenditures and that would have been 2.9 million. However, your unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2024 was $13,761,000, putting your fund balance percentage for general fund expenditures at 137.69%. So well over that 25% threshold. Your tax collection rate was a outstanding 99.41%. This is a bar graph from the past four years. Obviously, you see your revenues has increased from year to year and your expenditures has increased with it, but not as much as your revenues. So moving on, your top three revenues for the general fund, for your ad warrant taxes, you collected 4.9 million and that made up 42% of your total revenues. Your unrestricted intergovernmental, which is the sales and use tax, your franchise fees and taxes, you collected $4,35,000, that made up 34%. Your sales and services, $1,63,000, made up 9%. Your other revenues combined was 1.8 million, a total of 15%. And that was your investment earnings, $715,000, restricted intergovernmental, which is some grant money of $701,000. Other taxes and licenses of $27,000, permits and fees of $24,000. So still staying with the general fund for your top three expenditures, your public safety department, you spent 4.5 million and that made up 39% of the total expenditures for the general fund. Your general government, 2.5 million was spent at 22%. Your transportation department, you spent right at 1.6 million and that made up 14%. All other expenditures combined was 2.9 million. That's your environmental protection fund of $699,000, cultural and recreation of $770,000, and your public buildings of $850,000, and your debt service expenditures of $650,000. Moving on to your fund balance, so this is exactly what you want to see, an increase in fund balance from year to year, increasing to 16.6 million. 13.7 million of this is available to be spent at your, the board's discretion. With 2.9 million would deem to be committed, restricted, assigned, or non-spendable. What the main figures of this is a state stabilization of 1.3 million and your power bill fund of $572,000. But looking again at that fund balance available as a percentage of general fund expenditures, again, the minimum threshold for this is 25% and you're sitting at 137.69%. Basically, what this means, if you was to collect no more revenue as of June 30, 2024, you can still operate with the normal expenditures for 16 and a half months. So and to put that in perspective for the average per similar unit is a 46%, so you're almost triple of what average is. So moving on from the general fund to your Safe Routes for School Fund, total revenues and other financing sources, you collected $33,497. Your total expenditures in this was right at 4,000, giving you a positive net change of $29,512, and that was a new fund this year. So moving on from your governmental funds to your proprietary funds, so we'll start with the electric fund. Your total revenues and non-operating revenues, you collected $8,270,364. With your total expenditures and non-operating expenses was 6.4 million. However, of this amount, 449,000 was depreciation, which is a non-cash item. Your operating income for this was 1.5 million. You had transfers to other funds of 650,000, giving you a positive net change of 1.1 million. Bringing that net position up to 13.6 million. So moving on to your water fund, your total revenues and non-operating revenues, you collected 2.2 million. However, one piece of this was your gain on the gift of assets of 441,000. Your total expenditures and non-operating expenses was spent right at 1.7 million. Of this amount, depreciation was 223,000, of course, again, a non-cash item, bringing your operating income to $77,850. You had, did have transfers to other funds of 260,000, bringing your net change to $308,852. There was a restatement that's part of that prior period adjustment of 3.4 million, bringing your net position up to $6,634,000. So moving on to your sewer fund, total revenues and non-operating revenues was 3.5 million. Of this, the gain on the gift of assets was 716,000. Your total expenditures was, you spent right at 2.9 million of this, a depreciation of 490,000. Your operating loss of 230,000. You did have transfers come into this fund of 260,000, bringing your net, uh, positive net change of 792,000. And you also had a restatement of $4,593,000, bringing your net position up to $9,643,000.
I'm having trouble finding where you are and keeping up with you.
Uh, do you have?
I mean, is this the same as what you got?
No, 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 that's that's just the audit and I do have the presentation.
Okay. Okay.
We'll make sure that we get everybody a copy of the presentation.
Okay, I was just wondering. The numbers weren't lining up.
So this is just a quick synopsis of what you have.
Okay.
So moving on to your stormwater fund, your total revenues and non-operating revenues was $1,2,728. Of this was a gain on the gift of assets of $374,000. Your total expenditures and non-operate expenses was $583,000. Of this, depreciation of $83,186, bringing your operating loss in the stormwater fund of $57,204. You did have a net change overall of $418,000. You also had a restatement of $2,492,000, bringing your net position up to $8,810,000. So moving on to the cash that was on hand at 6:30, 2024, your general. Your general fund, you had restricted cash of $1,073,000, unrestricted cash of $15,646,000. For your safe routes for schools, 100% of this is restricted at $29,871. For your electric fund, $141,983 was restricted, and that is your customer deposits. $7,080,000 was unrestricted. For the water fund, $14,145 is restricted, and $2.1 million is unrestricted. Sewer fund, $28,350 is unrestricted, and $713,000 of unrestricted. With stormwater fund, 100% of this is unrestricted, a 4.5 million. So moving on to that significant deficiency and internal control that I mentioned, and that is for the prior period adjustment. And this is to restate your net position to reflect an understatement of fixed assets. So whenever y'all have these divisions come in and build these new communities, they end up giving you the assets for the stormwater, the water system, for you to maintain in the future. And you had not been reflecting those on your books. So however, what happened was we had engineering firm come in, estimate the cost of all that, and then we ended up putting those on the books this year. And that did cause a prior period adjustment of overall funds of $10,544,000. So that, we added $10,544,000 of additional fixed assets this year. So we did also had a financial performance indicator of concern. And so basically, what this is, is the LGC makes us fill out these data collection forms, and there was an indicator that did pop up as a net operating loss for your water and sewer fund. So you have 60 days to write a letter to the LGC stating that you do, you're aware of this and what you plan to do going forward to mitigate this issue. And every member on the board must sign that. So the issue that popped up this year was the operating income or loss excluding depreciation, but you also include your debt service principal and your interest payment. So however, for your water and sewer combined, there was a net loss of $28,419. That basically indicates that there's a negative balance, and possibly your rates are not covering your operating expenditures and your debt payments. So basically, you need to write a letter to the LGC stating that you are aware of this and what you plan to do going forward. You also need to write a letter about the prior period adjustment that I did mention. And also, there was one that popped up. It's automatic with anybody in the electric fund that had significant transfers for the Eastern Municipal Power Agency. However, you are not a part of that agency, you just state that you're not part of it, and you don't need to really do anything about that.
May I ask you a question on that one? It is the way that that form is structured as to why that pops up for us, right? So it's going to be an annual thing?
As, as long as you're, I think you did have $650,000 worth of transfers in that.
We did lower it.
Yeah, okay, so if you, if you lower, but below that threshold, then you won't have that going forward.
But anytime we go above that, it would...
Correct. It doesn't matter if you were a part of that Eastern Municipal Power or not. It will throw it, throw this indicator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it 6%?
Say it again.
What's the percentage?
I think it's 6% of your total revenues.
6%, and so we did lower it in our budget for the year that we're in currently. But again, it's the form and the way the form asked the question is why it pops up for us. We're not technically in violation because we are not a power agency. But you've heard it before, and you may hear it again. I just wanted to bring it up again. Thank you for letting me interject.
No problem. That's the three that needs to be addressed in that letter. Again, you have 60 days, and every member on the board needs to sign that. Just another highlight, we did have a single audit this year, a state single audit. So you did spend $603,024 in your power bill fund, and we did not have any findings in that single audit this year as well. Any questions?
That we're looking good?
Absolutely.
I was just scared to say that.
So yeah, the main metric that I would go back to is that available percentage in your general fund expenditures. Again, you have 16 and a half months of normal operations without collecting any more revenue. And again, similar units is 46%. We're sitting right at 138%. So that, that just indicates that you're being good stewards of the town's money.
Say that one more time. For the people in the audience can't hear that.
Yeah, well, it's basically means... Good stores, you have plenty of rainy day funds. If anything happens, hurricane or anything comes, you can have immediate action. You don't have to wait for FEMA.
It's a good point, because what happened in the western part of the state earlier this year, we would have, based on our current percentage, 16 and a half months to operate if we didn't collect any more revenue. So I think that's important, because as we look towards emergency preparedness, even though the state says you only have to have 8% of one year's operating expenditures, why it's important for us to have a healthy fund balance?
Well, that has changed. 8%, 8% used to be, but now for a town of your size, since you spent, spend over $10 million in your general fund, you're at 25%.
25%.
Yes, so they, they changed the metric on that.
Thank you, thank you. I try to keep up. Your policy says that we would try to work towards maintaining 25%, but this council and prior councils have exceeded that. And so thank you for allowing us to, to build that fund balance.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you and your organization for compiling this information. I know y'all was here a lot.
Well, no, I wasn't a lot. We came up twice. We came up for preliminary, just to get to know and get internal controls, make sure we understand the controls and we're able to identify what areas we needed to address. And then we came up and for the year end and looked at all the fiscal after action stuff.
We appreciate you. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, the power point that you presented, will that be made available to the council?
Yes.
To cross check?
Yeah, I think Jessica has that.
Thank you.
And we will get pages.
I will, absolutely. I'll get that to you tomorrow.
All right. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Take care.
All right.
Just real quickly, I just want to say thank you to the auditor for his presentation tonight and for all their hard work, and for the finance staff for their work during the whole audit process and the rest of the town's staff. Thank you.
And thanks, Jessica, for all your hard work.
All right, we don't need any action over that.
I do think we normally ask council to vote to accept the audit report. So if you could do that, that would be great. And unfortunately, it looks like our software is down for the count for the rest of the evening. So if we could do it the good old fashioned way, that would be great.
All right. So I need a motion to accept the audit report with the change that Ms. Robson found on page nine.
I move that we accept the audit report with the change of the name of the municipality.
Second. I think that whole page needs to be changed because it refers to a ABC board.
Yes, ma'am. We'll make sure those changes. With the corrected cover lever.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay, all right, second, okay, thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smill, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Herrell, to accept the audit with the change to be noted on page nine. Any discussion before we vote? F nine, I'll vote by raising the right hands, please. Motion carry, five zero. Thank you. Next up, it's our public hearing, and we have Mr. Stephen Penn come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. So our first public hearing tonight is Villa Grand Phase Three. It's an annexation petition. Villa Grand Phase Three, the applicant is Nolan Sod's of Nolan Commercial, or Commercial Contractors. This is off of Red Forbes Road, just north of the existing Villa Grand Homes. It's a 22.733 acre site where we're expecting 40 new single-family residential homes. If you look at this map online, everything outlined in the purple represents what will be within the town. And again, this is Red Forbes Road right here. This is Denali. This is the existing Villa Grand. This is the annexation map. And finally, staff does recommend approval of the annexation petition. It would become effective December 31st, 2024. If anybody has any questions before the public hearing opens, happy to assist.
Anybody have any questions for Stephen?
Thank you.
If no questions, I'm going to now open the public hearing for Villa Grand Phase Three Annexation. If anyone here would like to speak against this annexation, please step to the podium, state your name and address. If there's anyone that would like to speak against this annexation, will you step to the podium? If there's none, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this annexation of Villa Grand Phase Three, please step to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman Terry. I'm John Thomas. I'm with Thomas Engineering in New Bern, and I live in New Bern. And I just wanted to come up here, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, represent the applicant, and we're looking forward to just getting them annexed. The progress of the project is almost 99.9% complete. And so once we get the annexation done, and we get all the certifications and approvals, and everybody's happy, then we'll be coming before the planning board and this council to get the final plat approved. But thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for us?
Any drainage problems in that area? I know, I know you've...
I'm not aware of any. There's a pretty good drainage system that goes through there.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Villa Grand Phase Three Annexation? Is there anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, I'm now closing the public hearing on the Villa Grand Phase Three Annexation. Public hearing is now closed. And what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the annexation petition.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnny Moore, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Herrell, to accept the Phase Three Annexation. Any discussion? F nine, please vote by raising your right hand. Okay, motion carry, five zero. All right. Thank you. Next up, Stephen.
Next up is our second public hearing for tonight. It is Southbrook rezoning request. It's a PUD. It's an amendment to an existing ordinance that we have. Because there's so much into this rezoning, I have prepared a packet in front of you. It, it's titled Public Hearing, Southbrook PUD Rezoning. The first page shows just the summary of changes, just so you can have it in front of you and consider it while, while I'm presenting. The second and third, or the last, second, third, and fourth pages, there are two letters of recommendation that the town has received for this rezoning. And then lastly, I have prepared a rezoning guide. This rezoning guide is what our Planning and Zoning Board currently uses now to review rezonings, to help us align a little bit more with state statute, ensure that everything is being answered per state requirement. And this is the review of consistency, whether it's consistent with our comprehensive land use plan, whether it is reasonable for the area in which it's being proposed, and ultimately, whether they approve or deny the rezoning. Southbrook is a PUD as stated. Tonight's rezoning request is from the applicant's Southbrook NCLLC, Scott Moore. This is a 245.43 acre site that is currently, or it's located on Church Street Extension and Lori Ellis Road. So the current zoning district was approved in January 2023. This was a conditional zoning district in which it's R6, PUD, and multifamily residential. The proposal tonight is to amend the existing PUD, or Planned Unit Development, remain R6 and multifamily residential, as we will discuss. Just to give you a quick overview of what a PUD is and why it's being used in this situation. A PUD is a form of rezoning and use in which a conditional zoning district is requesting flexibility in our design to allow for clustered development in exchange for permanently preserved open space on the site. Southbrook was a great candidate for this in that it helped to ensure the protection of environmentally sensitive features on this site, such as streams, riparian buffers, ponds, wetlands, while creating a comprehensive design for the entire site. Timeline of this existing PUD, the applicant voluntarily held two community meetings in October 2022 to gain input from the community and to share their vision for the development. Town Council ultimately approved this PUD rezon in January 9th, 2023. A preliminary plat for a portion of this property has actually already been approved, and it was March 11th, 2024. The remainder of the tract, a preliminary plat, is under review, and it's actually going to go before you tonight. Adjacent property owners were notified of tonight's public hearing on November 18th, 2024. A sign was placed on the property as well as daily reflector notifications. Looking at this image, everything within blue is what we consider Southbrook. We've got Church Street Extension, north to south here, east to west here, we've got Lori Ellis Road. This is an image of the rezoning map. So everything in the light tan is single-family detached or regular homes. It's an R6 zoning district. Everything in the darker yellow right here is the multifamily residential or the townhomes. Now, this entire map matches what was approved originally. The only thing that we are looking at on this map especially is in this red box here. Originally, or currently, it is single-family. They are proposing single-family attached or multifamily townhomes within that area now, tonight. So we're going to go ahead and jump into some of the, or we're going to go ahead and jump to all of the changes that are being proposed for this rezoning tonight. The first one we're going to look at, as just alluded to, is the single-family attached or multifamily residential being added to this area. The applicant wishes to shift some of the single-family attached into this area. Now, this will not change the overall number of single-family attached within this development. There will still be 154 townhomes that can be in this development. So it doesn't change the number of them, it just changes the location of them. Staff would support this aspect of the rezoning, as it does reduce environmentally sensitive areas and impacts. The original thought was to bring some single-family attached to this area. This would cover or cross a buffered stream, and this proposal would save from having to cross that buffered stream. Another aspect of the rezoning that is being requested is a change in house sizes. Currently, single-family detached homes must be 1,800 square foot heated space as a minimum. The applicant is requesting that single-story homes be lowered to 1,500 heated square feet, and two-story homes be lowered to 1,600 heated square foot. So again, going from 1,800 heated square foot down to a minimum of 1,500 for the single-family detached homes. They are also proposing a change in the size of... They are also proposing a change in the size of single-family attached homes. Again, attached represents townhomes. The current minimum is 1,600 square feet heated space. They are requesting to lower that to 1,400 square foot of heated space. Looking at some of the zoning in the area, this red line, again, it represents Southbrook. Southbrook is currently an R6 and multifamily conditional district PUD. Surrounding is dominated by single-family detached. Generally, R10 up to R15 is what you're seeing in the existing and developed subdivisions in this area. There are three existing subdivisions that will have direct interconnectivity into Southbrook. And tonight, we're going to look into Melon Downs, Holly Grove, and Brookstone to review the reasonableness of this request. So, the first adjacent neighborhood that will have direct interconnectivity is Holly Grove. It currently, or it's built out at 61 homes. It's located on Church Street. This is single-family detached only. There are no single-family attached within the subdivision. Average home size is 2,370 heated square foot per home. The minimum home size is 1,821 square foot of heated space. The zoning district for the subdivision is R12.5 conditional district. The condition placed in this subdivision is that all homes must be a minimum of 1,800 heated square foot. Brookstone is the second subdivision we're going to look at tonight. So, this is going to have direct interconnectivity into the subdivision as well. Brookstone has 32 existing homes and 49 lots in the next phase. This is off of Church Street Extension. This is a single-family detached subdivision only, no single-family attached within this one. The average home size is 2,511 heated squares feet. Minimum is 2,032 square foot of heated space within the homes. The zoning district for the first phase was R15 conditional district. The condition stated that all homes must have a minimum of 2,000 square foot of heated space within this section. Two other requirements was that 75% of the lots, not the homes, but the lots shall have a minimum of 20,000 square feet, and that the remainder 25% of the lots must have 17,500 square foot. So, this is just kind of to show that these are really large lot subdivisions, or lots within the first phase. Now, Phase Two will be the area that connects to Southbrook. This is under construction drawing review currently and is zoned R10. The last neighborhood that has direct interconnectivity today is Melon Downs. Melon Downs has 84 homes. It's off of Lori Ellis Road. This is single-family detached only, no single-family attached within this subdivision. Average home size is 2,082 square foot of heated space. The smallest home is 1,490 square foot of heated space. This is zoned R12.5. And to look at the future land use to determine, you know, there's a lot of land around here that is not yet developed. So, this subdivision will help direct the growth of the surrounding subdivisions as well. The surrounding area, again, that is undeveloped, is mostly suburban residential. So, everything within the yellow is suburban residential, including Southbrook. The only area not developed in this area adjoining is to the southeast right here, you have some rural residential in the green area. So, again, looking at the future land use of the neighboring undeveloped land, it'll be dominated primarily of single-family detached homes. Again, this PUD was extremely unique in that it was permitted due to the significant amount of environmentally sensitive features on the site. Future development character area for these properties, again, is suburban residential. Character area is most of it, so R20, R15, R12.5. Suburban residential possibly can allow R10 or R8 if open space is dedicated. Character use in suburban area is large lots, primarily low-density single-family residential. The other small area to the southeast was rural residential. Suggested zones for rural residential is agricultural residential. These are 20,000 square foot single-family homes. You consider this rural outskirts. We're not prioritizing this as growth areas in the future, which means 15-plus years. So, these are primarily large lot residential, farmhouses, agricultural uses and buildings, occasional single-family detached in a rural configuration. I did want to point out, one of the land use goals is make sure that we use our comprehensive land use plan and future land use plan when making our rezoning decisions. There are three other minor changes within this rezoning. One of the proposed changes is a minor change in lot widths on construction drawings. For staff, we expect from the preliminary plat to the construction drawings to have extremely small deviations in lot widths. So, that's not necessarily an issue with staff. However, staff has notified the applicant that the inclusion of this statement will not change the review of this development in any way. It will still have to go through the same procedures as any other development. So, if they are trying to relocate lots in other areas of the subdivision, add lots, things like that, it'll always have to come back before planning and zoning and town council. So, this does not actually change any of our procedures. The applicant has also added a statement that multiple single-family detached homes will be made available by the builder within the subdivision. And then, lastly, the final statement is that all single-family attached or townhomes will contain at least one one-car garage.
Stephen, could you go back to number two?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell me what that means.
So, I think the applicant is trying to make a statement that there will be, it will not be the exact same home throughout the 612 units. The applicant also has a previous requirement that there should be a different home that is on each side of them and across the street from them. So, it's kind of a duplicate statement, you know, stating that there will be multiple homes within this subdivision.
Does that undo the previous statement that was approved?
No, it does not. That statement remains as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That statement is already in there, correct?
Yes, I think this is a little bit of an elaboration on it, a little bit of a.
Clarification.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't replacing.
It was, it is not replacing it, none.
Thank you.
And just a summary of the changes really quick. Again, a relocation of multifamily residential zoned area, but not the total. It'll still be the same amount of single-family attached. Reduction in heated square foot of single-family detached and single-family attached homes. Added requirement for one one-car garage for each single-family attached product. Added statement that there will be multiple single-family detached homes within the development. And adding a statement that small changes in lot lines are to be expected between the preliminary plat and the construction drawings. I've received three notices. I received one of concern. It was a phone call from a property owner in Brookstone stating that they attended all of the initial meetings that the applicant set up prior to the rezoning, the first rezoning that was approved, and that they are concerned with the new changes in home sizes and do not support the change. I've also received two letters of support. Mr. Abbott Hunzucker is an owner of a 43-acre farmland to the south of this development. He believes that the proposed changes would diversify housing units and provide more affordable housing prices. I received a second letter of support from a Mr. Tolliver, a resident of Windsor subdivision, who supports the proposed changes and the changes to home sizes. Again, I've got these letters before you in full. This is a overview of what the letters state. So, planning and zoning recommendation. There were two versions of this brought to the planning and zoning board. The first version went to the planning and zoning board in September. It was denied. The applicant withdrew that application, made some changes, and resubmitted prior to a public hearing being posted. This this version was, you know, now, hold on, sorry. The new version was brought to the planning and zoning board in October. Planning and zoning unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning and voted that it was consistent with the land use plan and reasonableness for the area in which it sits and is in the public interest. Now, I have on this second page, the rezoning guide. This is what planning and zoning now uses to review a rezoning. The first review is the consistency. Is it consistent with the comprehensive land use plan? Is the proposal consistent with the comprehensive land use plan? Secondly, we review its reasonableness. Now, the state also says that, you know, it can be consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, but it may not be reasonable for the area in which it's being proposed. So, the state has provided five different options in which the town can review to approve or deny its reasonableness. For instance, number one is size, physical conditions, and other attributes. Number two, benefits and detriments to landowners, neighbors, and the surrounding community, and so on. Finally, our planning and zoning board takes into consideration the consistency and reasonableness for an overall vote to approve or deny the rezoning. Again, in this situation, planning and zoning board on the consistency, on the reasonableness, and on the overall vote, recommended approval for this rezoning. Staff's recommendation is to review this proposal for its consistency and reasonableness in its area. Is the plan consistent with the comprehensive land use plan for suburban residential? Are the amendments reasonable for its location? Are the home sizes 1,400 square foot minimum for townhomes, 1,500 square foot minimum for homes? And the relocation of the townhomes reasonable for this location? Of course, we always want to consider all aspects of documents that we have, planned unit development and conditional zoning district requirements. Again, I have a guide at your seat to review consistency, reasonableness, and rezoning. Before we open up the public hearing and invite the applicant, I do have a standard vote in front of you. If you wish to approve the rezoning, this is a motion that the board could follow to approve the rezoning. If you wish to deny the rezoning, this is a template that the board may use to deny the rezoning with some possible reasons as well. With all that being said, I'm sure there's some questions. If anybody has any questions, certainly let me know.
All right, that was a lot to take in.
It's a lot, and I actually cut it down a lot, too.
That's a lot to take in.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know the applicant's here and may speak to it. But Stephen, do we know why the reduction in square footage is being proposed?
So, during the planning and zoning board, Mr. Hossettler asked, "Why change the home sizes now?" The applicant then answered that they receive direct builder and market input, and reducing the home sizes provide more potential buyers to the subdivision.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Stephen before we open up the public hearing? Anybody? If not.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. If not, I'm now opening the public hearing.
And we do have the applicant here. He's got a few slides that he would like to show the council as well.
Now, opening up the public hearing for Southbrook Plan Unit Development PUD Rezoning Amendment, okay? If you would like to speak against this, if you would like to speak against this, please step to the podium, state your name and address. If you would like to speak against this Southbrook Plan Unit Development Rezoning Amendment, if you would like to speak against. All right. If you would like to speak in favor of Southbrook Plan Unit Development PUD rezoning request, please step to the podium, state your name and address. If you would like to speak in favor of it.
Good evening. Well, that was a lot. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Scott Moore. I am one of the owners and the applicant for Southbrook NCLLC. Mr. Penn has done a great job, really, in summarizing all of the revisions. For brevity this evening, I will not cover them, but I will simply answer the reason why we are proposing these. So, since our Southbrook Phase One preliminary plat approval in March of this year, we have received feedback that we need to provide a community that can be inclusive and available to as many buyers as possible, that we need to build and provide a quality community that will make homeownership available to the Winterville policemen, the firemen, the public work members, the schoolteachers, and essentially, everyone who serves this great town. It's those service members that should not have to seek new homes anywhere outside of Winterville due to affordability, and they should not be left out of living in a great community with outstanding amenities. So, our team has really taken this feedback to heart. So, as he was alluding to, we conducted additional market studies and discussed our approved PUD requirements with various builders, and the consensus to make our community available to everyone who wants to make Winterville a home is to provide the option, just to provide the option, to build a smaller house in a mixture of larger homes and create a more diverse diversity with our housing product. Now, despite the changes in market and the increase with inflation from two years ago when our PUD was approved, we remain steadfast in building the first-class community that we presented them with all the architectural standards continuing to be in full force. During our first planning board meeting, and this will get to the question that the town manager had asked, during our first planning board meeting this past September, I heard concerns that this revision will result in building a community of only smaller homes. So, I assured the planning board at that meeting, that has never been our intention, and I took it one step further, and I made these revisions and the PUD revisions to guarantee that we will build homes of all sizes, which, again, will include a mixture of larger homes. After I made this change, I came back to the planning board, and then, as he had said, they were approved unanimously. Now, at that meeting, as well as tonight, Mr. Penn provided the research and the feedback, which confirmed that those square footages revisions that we are proposing are similar and comparable with the home sizes that are in those adjacent communities as well. From my discussion with builders, home building is becoming more efficient in its designs, and we are seeing a reduction in hallway spaces. Dining rooms, in many cases, are not standalone rooms. They're being merged with kitchens and with family rooms. So, these types of efficiencies and many others have afforded the opportunity for us to build some smaller homes. And just to give you insight on what we do, what I see from our communities is that the original buyers have become repeat buyers who live in a community, and through a variety of different home sizes, they can find their next home in their current community and scale it to really meet their life needs. So, this revision helps families in making their life transitions so they don't have to leave the community or the town that they love for that purpose. Now, our communities see owners who participate in all walks of life, and we desire to provide an option for a smaller home to address this need, whether it is the first responder moving into their first house or their second house, or if it's an empty nester downsizing or simply desiring a little bit less maintenance. So, that in a nutshell is really. So that in a nutshell is really the reason why we are making the change and why we want to have everybody to have access into this great community. Now, something that's come up tonight and also that has come up through my process with this is there's been a significant concern regarding flooding and drainage on the western side of our property. So there are several things that I'm going to say to address this. First, we have to develop under what's called a post-construction ordinance. So we have to account for all of the runoff on our site and the storm drainage, which includes the retention and treatment on our site. All of these items are reviewed by engineers and all of the ponds have to be sized to deal directly with our impact. Secondly, with this development, what you have is a comprehensive, fully-designed storm water drainage system that will cover the entire two hundred and forty acre lots or forty acre site. If you were to develop this site in two or three, even more projects, simply the left hand is not talking to the right hand. You would have a less efficient design. It would not as function as well with that type of piecemeal development. Whereas if you have a comprehensive design, all of that plays much better in dealing with stormwater directly. Thirdly, I understand that there are some developers in smaller communities that have left owners with drainage and flooding issue that have rear yards that are actually within the Noose River buffer. We are not proposing to place any of our lots across the subdivision in any section within any of the buffers. We're also not going to place any of our lots within the gas line that runs across the property as well. Those easements and those buffers serve a purpose. And the only way that we are going to encroach in is we have street crossings, but that will be it for our project. So finally, and this is really more for the public, if anyone disagrees or has differing views on this, I think the most important note about Southbrook is that this is a ten-year project. We're going to be here for the long haul. And if there are any issues that arise as owners of the property, we will be here to address them as well. So we won't be here for one or two years and then we're out. We are here for ten years at least on this project. So I think that's important to say. Now, staff has put forth the basis of approval and now on the findings of reasonableness and consistency. So in conclusion, I think that it is very reasonable to provide a community filled with amenities and open space, especially to the exceptional individuals and families who serve this town. I think it is reasonable and consistent as staff has shown that we are providing homes with similar square footages as provided in the adjacent communities as well as a full integrated network of current street connections as well as future stubs to undeveloped properties. As also for matters of consistency, Southbrook's design and layout is rooted in the policies and the principles of the town's comprehensive land use plan. It is what it's founded on. We have worked diligently with town staff in addressing all the ordinance requirements and we have incorporated all their recommendations through this plan review process. Again, we have received planning board approval back in October and we have worked with the citizens and have done everything we can to incorporate their feedback as well. I really think that this collaborative effort has led to the best possible outcome through these revisions. That will lead for a successful community as well as a great place to call home. So with that being said, thank you so much for your time and your consideration. I'm also joined by Kevin Varnell this evening, who is our engineer. If there are additional in the weeds questions about water quality and drainage, I wanted to bring him here. So if you had anything that you needed to have answered. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I just have one question, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Out of the, this is, let me see, kind of get it right. The HOA, is it one HOA or is it going to be like according to the communities, or HOA?
We are planning right now a master HOA for the entire community.
Okay.
When we come to the single-family attached, they will have a sub-association because they will have additional items that they will be paying for. Because we are planning right now on providing all of the maintenance for those lots, for all the exterior maintenance as well, the roof being repaired, all of that. So they will have a sub-association that will pay, but everyone will be a part of that master association. That way, everybody has access to all the amenities that we're going to build as well.
Okay, all right, that's my question.
And I get to be the HOA president of.
Okay. Any, Ms. Robinson, Councilwoman Robinson, I'm sorry.
I noticed that you talked about that the idea of the new area here was to increase the number of buyers, but I never heard anything about the price. You say affordable, but yet still we know what affordable is in Winterville. Is there any means by which the price would be reduced for our firemen, for our teachers in this area?
We could work out, well, there's a couple of ways to answer that. One, in the studies that we did, that's what drove for the price, the size reduction, which ideally deals with the price reduction. So we feel that we will be under, at least under the average of what's happening and what we're seeing being sold in Winterville now. The other thing is with the builders that we can work with is they can offer special programs to also help bring them in, whether it's incentives, buy downs, interest rates. Those are the things that I have to work out with them, knowing the importance of what it is that we're putting forth and having this approved. Those are the things that I'm going to have to work out with them when we get, actually when we have our builder. We have to have these changes to actually figure out who our builder team is going to be and that is something I'll have to work out with them.
I have a fear of the gas line. Can you show me about where these would be based on that line that runs across there?
So what I put forth is a map here that everything in red is the gas line. So what we have done is making sure in all of our planning, that all of our lots, this is going to be completely maintained open space. Everything that runs in here is for the full width of the gas line. There will be no building on it. I don't want any, we didn't want any owners putting any fences or anything on this. We want it to be completely just maintained open space. So that's why we made the decision to do that.
And so is that, that's a road?
No, 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 that is just what it is today. It is the current gas line. It will remain fully as it is with no encroachments on it. And I definitely understand your fear, which is why we did it that way specifically. And also the same way with all the blue lines, while we left all of our lots completely out of the Noose River basin because of everything that was going on with the lots here in this area, in Brookston.
And you are going to maintain, you are going to make sure that that land drains? Because we, that's the problem we have in some of our subdivision.
What you have right now is all the land is draining naturally. So when we come in and actually develop this, what you see here is we will have large areas where we have to have these ponds built specifically to deal with these drainage areas. All of the storm drains will lead to these areas for retention. To be able to hold and to treat these areas according to, what's the state statutes, Kevin? Yeah, the state statutes. But the retention part aspect of it is important because right now you have no retention on the site. Everything is free flowing. And when we come in and develop it, everything that we provide will have these types of ponds and areas that need to retain.
May I ask a question? I assume all of those ponds will be, well, there's a, how should I ask this? A robust maintenance plan within the various homeowners associations?
Absolutely. We're going to have to hold monies aside for either annual maintenance, which we do on all of other communities anyways. We'll have to also put aside reserves to make sure that if there are ever any failures or anything that ever happens over the long term of these things, that we have money set aside for that specifically. So yes, we're actually very accustomed to building these types of communities that have these types of ponds that have to have reserves in place so that owners can't go in later, even after we're gone and try to go in and reallocate the money. It's there for that specific purpose, for the maintenance and also for just the long-term care of them.
If I may, I'd like to ask for clarification on a statement in the proposed amendment. It's on page ninety-three of our packet. I'll read it. Says to allow design flexibility of development, the following deviations and/or changes can be made at the construction drawing review without further revision to the rezoning and PUD or preliminary plat. The developer can establish and/or modify lot width revisions for all single-family detached lots, provided that the lot widths adhere to appendix two. Like what does this all mean? Like changes can just happen?
Yes, it's, I think Stephen said it best. If we come in and start trying to relocate or reallocate roads and put lots in other places, we have to come back before you guys. What that allows for the flexibility is if you have long stretch of properties here, we can just shift some lot lines. We're not adding, we're not adding lots. We're just, we need some flexibility. And I just had it written in also as a clarification that we're not saying that lot line right there is a, I'm sorry, my hand's not moving that well, but right there, we can just shift it a few feet to the left or the right. That's really just all that that language allows us to do.
But it's still got to meet the setback requirements, whether you shift it left or right.
Absolutely. We couldn't, you know, even if, yeah, we couldn't, we have to still meet the standards of what the PUD is. We can't change anything about that. Setbacks, lot sizes, everything else.
I have a question for Stephen, if I may, along the same lines. Stephen, they couldn't go in and move every lot line?
No.
What is the threshold for?
So the way we generally look at it, so again, once you go past the preliminary plat to the construction drawings, once you're designing your stormwater ponds, different infrastructure, we expect there to be sometimes where infrastructure or easements may be larger. The pond itself may have to be larger for design. So very small deviations in lot lines so that we still, let's say that it's lot one through fifty here. We still recognize the one through fifty between these two roads. There is no added lots between, let's say, those one through fifty, but very, very, very small deviations. Once we're talking about changes in really anything addressed by the subdivision ordinance itself and not the zoning ordinance in relation to the lots itself, then it would have to come back to planning and zoning and town council. We have expressed that to them, that this note is not really necessary within the.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we expressed that to them in the first go-around that was replaced, that this is kind of standard protocol that if there was extremely small changes. But I do want to note in front of, you know, the board that if there are any deviations beyond that, it would have to follow the same as any other subdivision that comes before the town.
Got a question. When we are speaking of attachment homes, are we only talking about just two homes together or three?
No, we are talking about multiple homes placed together. So not duplexes, but townhomes of, could be four to six units that are all in the same line. Yes, sir.
What's the MICE number together?
Could you step up to the mic?
Sure, I was actually clarified if it was an ordinance requirement or not. I think we're right in line with what Stephen was talking about. Whatever the ordinance requires, that's the max that we'll put together.
Stephen, you know what that is?
I believe it, this, you can look closely.
The ordinance doesn't have a set requirement of number of units. It has a, so if it was going through the standard townhomes, it's a hundred, like, it's something like a hundred and fifty foot in width that the unit can't be. With a PUD, again, it's a little different because you're clustering developments to ensure that we're not placing things onto the, in environmental situations. So, yeah, but what he's proposing roughly, oh, seven.
It would be seven together.
Seven max.
Anyone else have any other, any more questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I said, Mr. Moore. I had, I said, boy, but I'm not Mr. Moore. Sorry about that, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, any, all right, okay.
I've got a procedure question. Do we have to meet the same requirements as the planning board?
It's a Stephen question.
Yeah, those questions that they ask about, is it consistent with the.
It has to be answered. We don't have to do it quite as formal as reviewing the consistency, then making a vote, reviewing the reasonableness, then making a vote and then reviewing it overall and making a vote. The reason why I did it so specific like that is because it helps staff and the applicant understand a little bit more of the planning and zoning board's thinking. So if they say we wanted to not, then they can provide explanations of why they wanted to not. So that's why we've broken it out into three different votes for planning and zoning. For us, really, the statement that I'll bring up before you make your vote of after review of the comprehensive land use plan and its reasonableness, we approve it or after review of the comprehensive land use plan and reasonableness, we deny because of blah, blah, blah. Just kind of making that statement is all we legally really need to do. But yes, ultimately, we're reviewing the same things.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this development? Southbrook Plan, Unit Development, Rezoning Amendment. Has anyone else that would like to speak in favor? You have your opportunity to step to the podium. If none, I close this public hearing on the rezoning amendment, Southbrook Plan, Unit Development. And now, what is the pleasure of the board?
I moved to deny, to deny the rezoning after consideration of the comprehensive land use plan and the other factors. This proposal is found to be unreasonable due to, and I'm going to paraphrase, the change, changes in regard to lot and home sizes and other variations from the originally approved plan. That suffice?
I would like to second that.
I have a motion and a second motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilman Moy to deny the rezoning amendment request. Is it, that's correct, right? All right. Any discussion before we proceed to vote?
For clarity, the denial is because of the home sizes? What is the specific, can you restate the reason for the denial?
There are too many variations and that are, and changes from the originally approved plan.
And the variation is the sizes of the home?
Adjustments of lot sizes. The movement of some of the single-family detached and then the multifamily, the sizes of both the single-family attached and the multifamily. There are several.
Cool. Open for discussion still?
Yeah, yeah, you're talking.
Okay, so what I hear is the, it was a motion for denial. And what I hear is specifically because there's variations in the sizes of the homes from the original, I guess, proposal to the planning and rezoning aboard. That may or may not be what I'm hearing, but my comment is I don't see that many variations. I also have seen or have heard reasoning for the variations. And this is to provide a variation of housing made availability, made available to public servants, to teachers, to police officers. So that is the reasoning or the core for the variation in the sizes of the housing. In terms of variation in plots, the gentleman just explained, and it was just explained by staff, that if any variation outside of what is normalcy, and I might not be articulating it exactly how it needs, wants to be heard, but it would have to go back in front of the planning and zoning board. So my comment is that I believe that the developer has provided a good reasoning for the variation in sizes of the houses. And this is maybe something unique to Winterville, but this is what's needed in terms of fair housing. And that is what I needed to say.
Thank you.
If I, real quick, just to be clear, Councilwoman Hawkins? If, real quick, just to be clear, Councilwoman Hawkins, you all have voted on the previous, on the existing rezoning and PUD document. The council voted on that to approve it. So, variations would be, not only that went before planning board, but you all have seen this and previously approved a different version. I just wanted to be clear on that when you're considering what you're, what you're deciding on.
Sure. If it has come before the council and the council have voted, we maybe need to go back to the minutes. I don't know if I voted for it or not. What I'm saying when I heard a denial is that if this proposed amendment, this is an amendment that was voted before us, correct? This was an amendment, and then what was heard in the amendment or stood out was the variation in homes' sizes, and the questions came about, and an answer was presented as to why, and the benefits to those who is more affordable for some to have bigger homes as opposed to smaller homes while still having the same amenities. That is what I heard, and that is just my comment as to, you know, a comment after the denial. I feel like the developer has presented why there's variations as well as in terms of lot changes that would not be significant unless it goes before the planning and zoning. So, that's my comment.
If I may clarify, it is not based solely on, we have had, unfortunately, a, there have been several instances of developers, past, current, not following through with original plans, whether it's a minimum of the berm does not meet requirements, or the entrance signs are not maintained, or HOA. And we have tried to be very consistent in holding those coming in to develop in our community to a high standard, to provide quality homes that hopefully will be long-term homes for individuals, and that's the desire.
All right. Ms. Robinson, Councilwoman Robinson, do you have something you want to say? Or did you have?
I did. Yeah, I did.
All right.
And to your point, Councilwoman Smith, the quality, yes, is essential, but in the landscape of our town and our country, affordability is essential as well. And so, with, in respect to what Councilwoman Hawkins has discussed, and also, Mr. Moore, about the affordability for our public servants, folks that live, work, and play in this town. So, I do understand both sides, but I do appreciate the sizing and affordability of what you discussed, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Let me, I'd like to see a difference, what would be the difference in the price of the homes. If I, I think I could, I would feel different if I knew that you, the price of the home was going to drop $40,000 or something like that. I don't, I don't, I'm getting the feeling that if we do 1,600 or we do 1,400, the price of the home would probably be about the same.
Any more? If not, I'm calling for the question, and we have a motion on the floor for denial. All in favor of the denial, please raise your right hand. One, two, three. All right, thank you. All in favor, I mean, opposite, right? Opposed to, opposed to. Raise their right hand. One, two. Denial carries. Three, two. Okay. Don, did you see who your three, two was? All right, and, okay. So, denial for the rezoning request. Get my bearings together here. Southbrook Unit Development Plan Rezoning Amendment was denied. Okay. Now, Stephen, Southbrook's annexation.
Yeah, our last public hearing tonight is Southbrook's annexation request. So, the town received an annexation request from Southbrook NC LLC. It's a Church Street Extension site and Lori Ellis Road. This is a 246.177 acre site. We're expecting full build-out on this site. There'd be 612 residential units. This image in blue shows Southbrook on the screen. I also have the annexation map on the screen as well. Staff recommends approval of the annexation petition. Annexation to become effective December 31st, 2024. Anybody has any questions?
Anyone has any question for Stephen on the Southbrook annexation?
Thank you.
Okay. If not, we'll open the public hearing for Southbrook annexation. Anybody that would like to speak against this annexation can step to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone that would like to speak against this annexation could step to the podium, state their name and address. Okay. Anyone that would like to speak in, anyone that would like to speak in favor of the Southbrook annexation could step to the podium, state their name and address.
Good evening. Scott Moore, applicant of Southbrook NC LLC. We're just in favor of this, of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor? If none, I now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the approval of the annexation for Southbrook.
Second.
Have a second by Councilwoman Hawkins. Is that correct, Councilwoman? All right. Had a motion made by Councilman Moye, second by Councilwoman Hawkins, to accept the Southbrook annexation. Any discussion? Any discussion? If none, please vote by raising your right hand. Motion carry, five, zero. Don, all right, thank you. Can I take a five-minute recess? I'm going to take a five-minute break here for a second.
Looks sassy as usual.
I'm heading that way, too. I start because I was afraid this is my-
...
Want to get some candy?
Yeah.
I'll have a drink of water. Want this can? I'll buy it. Would you like some candy from Candyman?
I'm good right now, but I might think.
Thank you for the forgiveness.
I had to turn on my mic, I'm sorry, Don. Public comment period of thirty minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item, including in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to town of Winneville for an item included in the public hearing section of their agenda. Residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites a public comment on the item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting, except during public comment period or as part of the public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by speaker, may schedule a matter for further consideration at a future council meeting, or may refer the matter to the town staff for disposition. Copies of the town public comment policies are available in the rear of the assembly room. And tonight, we have, one, two, three. Miss Matt got two.
You may have two, but I think.
Okay, all right. She'll have four?
Right.
I got, there's a fourth. I got three. Okay. All right, okay. So, we have three, four, okay. And then that, okay, right, okay, yeah, we have, I'm sorry, we have four. Because Mr. Johnson, Mr. Glenn Johnson was already in there, Mr. Johnson would step to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Town Manager and Council, and to the distinguished gentlemen on my right. I have three areas of concern. However, I would not have to address all of them today this evening. I know it's good news, because you know I am a talker. So, in light of that, I have had a conversation with Mr. Bowers and the police chief prior to the meeting starting. But I'll tell you what the three areas of concern are. And I'll drop this paperwork off to the clerk, who will in turn distribute it accordingly. One of my main concerns was Main and Mill, with the Main Street, oyster bar, building obstructing the vision of oncoming traffic as cars approach the intersection. You can't see up past the building, because the building blocks your view. I had originally talked with the former assistant town manager, Ben Williams, when he was here. He contacted somebody at North Carolina DOT, who said that there was only like, one accident within an eight-year period, so they didn't think that there was a need for a convex mirror at that location. And then I thought about it, I said, well, I have seen cars backed up as far as the fire station. So how does that obstruct the fire department vehicles that's leaving the station in route to an emergency? Perhaps it should be a preemptive device that that signal, so that the fire station can control the light pattern, make it all red all directions, to allow the fire engines to get past. The other concern was, Mill and Vernon White. As cars are turning left onto Mill Street, all of a sudden a car stops in front, because they want to make a left on Vernon White. That is definitely a safety hazard. I'll make a real brief right now. As you know, I am an advocate for safety. I've been appointed to the Brain Injury Advisory Council by the governor, and recently, as, as, November twenty-second, I've been appointed a chair on the Trillium Consumer Affairs Advisory Council. So I just want to recognize another survivor, who's sitting here with his wife. I don't want to call out his name, he might want to be anonymous. But we are all survivors, and one thing that we're concerned about is protection and prevention. I think some of these intersections, there's a lot of things that need to be done to prevent somebody from getting injured. Why wait until an accident occurs, where somebody might lose their life? Like the gentleman from DOC, wow, it's only been one accident in an eight-year period. Well, what are you going to do? Wait for something to happen and then do something about it? I don't, I don't think that's the right answer, the way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh, thank you, sir. Next, we have Lee and Tony. The Scotty? The Scotty?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are the owners of Cooper's Cup. We're requesting to see if we can get a parking spot for our shop for takeout orders. We've had a lot of complaints with customers, can't find a parking spot, can't really find somewhere to park to come in and pick up their order. There's times I have to run out and bring them the order. Also, there's like fifteen-minute parking for the dance studio. There's people parked there for two or three hours at a time, which is some, something that we need to address. I would really like to have a parking spot right in front, also a handicap spot. I had a handicapper that had to come from ten spots down to come in, come into my shop, which is making customers not want to stop at my shop to pick up coffee or online orders, which is kind of messing. It's affecting the revenue of our shop. And I am the other stroke survivor.
Thanks, Mr. Dr. Glenn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, all right, thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Brandy Daniels.
Town Council, Mayor, my name is Brady Daniels. I live in twenty-nine forty-five Foxglove Drive in Winneville, North Carolina. Before I get started, I know my time is ticking, but I just wanted to echo Cooper's Cup. I really enjoy them being there, and I, my daughter actually goes to the academy beside them, so I'm hopeful we'll be able to make that happen for them. We need some deviation from normal in Winneville. So I just wanted to add to my comments from last month. I returned back to the chambers last month for your, to see if you finish your closed session, but around nine-thirty, I headed home, so I didn't know if there was any updates from your closed session. I couldn't find anything online. Hopefully, we've had a chance to reach out to Corbella's to help and assist them with acquiring their license. But I also wanted to correct myself. Last month, I stated that there were four ABC permits within a one-mile radius, it's actually five. There's another bar called Merlin's that's on the same street, so there's actually five liquor licenses that we have across the street. I also had a chance to review the press release on November fifteenth regarding someone else, and I also just wanted to add two things real quick. It's been brought to my attention that this person has been pardoned, but I also just wanted to say, I had a chance to read the press release and was a little disappointed in some of the things that were pointed out and discussed. And hopefully, as a town council, you all will get a chance to review those, because if not, I made the assumption that you all read those, and that you, and that you agree with everything that's noted. So maybe in the future, prior to those press releases being printed or listed online, you'll look at those, and might also add, adding the name of the person who actually writes those press releases. I'm not, I don't work in journalism, but from what I read, they probably needed to be edited a little bit more prior to that. Just to make sure that you're also not allowing yourself to be muted because of your position. We always want to look out for the town of Winneville, but sometimes truth just needs to be said out loud, just to make sure you're doing what's best in the best interest of the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ma, Ms. Maddie?
Yes. My name is Maddie D. Jesus. Yeah, a reason, a reason I say that, because someone called me Maddie and Maddie, but my name is Maddie. And I live at that dangerous bloodbath intersection in Winterville, Mill and Boyd. And, you know what, I want to thank the committee for what you all did. All of you voted yes for a red, green, and yellow light. Everybody, that was sweet of you all, and I thank you all for doing that. And also, you said that there will be a stop sign on Mill Street, is that right, Ms. Hawkins? They, didn't they say they would put a stop sign on Mill? Ms. Hawkins, didn't they say that? Oh, oh. I think you did, but in the meantime, okay, they said that we would give.
Can I answer, or she's doing a comment out, outway? When you finish your comment out.
Okay, all right. Okay, but they said that they want a traffic light there, and I thought they asked to have a stop sign on Mill Street until you get that red, that traffic light. And the drivers from Boyd Street are expecting the people on Mill Street to stop, they think it's a stop sign there, which it should be. It should be, where is, where is the intersection? With no body stopping. At all intersection, go to Aiden, you turn on Mill Street, there's a traffic light. One block, another traffic light, turn this way, another traffic light, traffic light all the way down. I think we deserve that, too. And for safety. Now, the radars are fine, they're nice, but they're not solving the problem. Because Thanksgiving, the North Mill radar was off, and I saw the police down later putting batteries in there. But then, I was down at South End, and I was observing it, the light went off. It stopped, and people started speeding through there. And when I came tonight, I made sure, I checked again to see if it's there, but it's still off. That's not, that's not the problem, we need a traffic light. Now, one person is saying that my bushes was blocking the view, they couldn't see. You have no right to be looking across my yard. You're supposed to be looking up at that light up there. Everybody should look up that, that light, that light is going to tell you if anything coming that way. You've got to go peek and seeing if anything come behind my bushes. And also, is the DOT looking at this? You think they listen? I already, I mean, would somebody out there tell me, did the DOT watching this? What's my, can't somebody tell me? Well, anyway, I'm going to say it to the DOT. DOT, look, Winterville is doing a fine job, they're doing all they can. They already voted for a traffic light.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Matt, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Hawkins, if you would like to respond, Ms. Matt?
Yes. So first, thank.
Councilwoman Hawkins, I'm sorry.
So first, thank you, Mr. Jesus, for sharing your concern, your safety concern. It is a valid concern, and I have nothing but the highest respect for you. I, I, I know it might seem comical, but I hold you in high esteem. You know, I hold you in high esteem in everything that you are saying. You have come before the council several times, because this is a safety concern. You're taking out your time to come before us, because you want to prevent a fatality. There has been several accidents. And to answer your question, the first question, I have been advocating for, if we were to get any type of stop sign on Mill Street, I was told that there would be a flashing beacon light on Boyd, not Mill. I've been in constant communication with both Mr. Bowers, and I thank him for being the conduit in between myself and Mr. James for NC DOT. I have requested a report of the traffic count. A traffic count was said to me to have been done, which negates us having a signalization. We voted for signalization, and then there was to be follow-up in terms of a traffic count, which would then warrant a signalization. And I was told that it did not warrant it. And I can go on, because I asked for the traffic count on Main and Mill. When we look on Main and Mill, we have a signalized light. That same flow of traffic comes to Mill and Boyd. I was told that the traffic count for Main and Mill could not be located. I'm going to speak to that later when I go to the other items. But to answer your question, there was never any indication that a stop sign would be put on Mill, which is that steady flow of traffic. I do also have other questions about the traffic count that I did receive, in terms of the date in which it said the traffic count took place. And when I'm looking at the traffic count, it's two whole separate dates. So, I, I go by fact, and I go by what I see, and that should have been shared with everybody. And when I present it, I'm going to show you that it's different dates. A date way two weeks before, and a, a date, a day before, so which, which happened. And Mr. Jesus, I'm going to continue to advocate for signalization, and if we can't get it, always stop sign. I know we voted for beacon light, but as a council, we need to, I don't see any other beacon lights in Winneville. How would that affect Mr. Jesus's house with a beacon light flashing every few seconds? So somebody tell me how that might look shining in your window. So I'll speak to that when it comes to other items. So I just wanted to answer you, and I have great respect for you, thank you.
Also to Terry, to speak to the shop owner's request about parking or hearing out, could the staff look into that to see? And also to the chief to look into the parking limit time.
It's already in my notes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, vote by raising their right hand. Motion period, thank you. Own business?
Give me one second. Okay, Mayor, members of the council, back. Actually, the date escapes me, but we had planned in the budget to proceed with a classification pay study and an update of our personnel policy. This was actually the previous budget year. And then we put it on hold, because we had not hired a human resource director yet. Then, of course, we get Angie on board, and we want to proceed forward with planning to have the MAPS group come in and do those items for us. The MAPS group is a preferred vendor through the League of Municipalities. So the league handles their contract, their billing, et cetera. So, since it had been a while, the league wanted to update the agreement, which did increase the price somewhat, but it has been a bit of time since we initially signed that first agreement. So this is an updated memorandum of agreement for you all to approve this evening, that will continue to have us work on our classification pay study and our updated personnel policy with the MAPS group.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilwoman Smith. Any discussion on this? I just have a question. That study, how long do it normally take? Any idea, any general idea how long it take?
I would say it usually takes, let's say, six months.
Six months, okay.
And what they'll do is they'll put together, they'll look at the person, the position description questionnaire that each employee fills out. They'll look at what positions we currently have. There's a comparison list of entities that they'll use, look at what they have. They may make some updates to some of the job descriptions. And they'll look at the salaries paid for those employees in other locations. And then they will make some recommendations. They will offer three options as to how to implement those recommendations and present that to council.
And the reason I ask that, because I, I would like to see it if we could before the budget, so that we would know how to.
That's going to be tough.
I'm, I'm just, I was just saying.
But we will certainly try to get that done.
If we could get it done before budget time.
If not, then we will definitely look towards a happier implementation, if feasible.
Okay, all right, that's.
Which would be January of twenty-six.
Twenty-six, right, okay, all right. All right, well, we have a. Well, we have a, uh, motion on the floor, so, and if we could all vote by voting, uh, raising your right hand. Okay, motion carry five, I didn't see you. Motion carry for that. New business, I think, Steven, you're back on the clock.
All right. All right, we have three new business items, all residential subdivisions, we're growing residentially. The first one is Copper Creek, Section Three. Um, I have placed a preliminary plat at your seat so that you can see it a little bit more clearly. Um, there's so much detail and it gets washed out on the screen, it just makes it a little bit more helpful. Uh, the applicant is Interbanks Engineering, Marie Peeden. She's here if anybody does have any specific questions or technical questions. Uh, this is located on Reedy Branch Road on the west side of Highway of Eleven. Um, this is a twelve point eight acre site, zoned R twelve point five. This will contain thirty-four single-family residential lots, a stubbed street to the northern parcel, which is also classified as a residential, uh, parcel in the future land use plan, and interconnectivity with existing Copper Creek. If you look at the screen right here, I have overlaid the, uh, Phase Three onto the site where it's going to be sitting. So if you took Phase One and flipped it like a mirror, it would almost, uh, be identical to this upcoming phase. Uh, Phase Two of Copper Creek is over here to the west. So as you see, lies away, we'll make it straight through, uh, with interconnectivity and then a stub to the north as well, as I mentioned. Um, the preliminary plat is sitting on the screen as well as, uh, at your seat. Planning and zoning board recommended unanimous approval at their November eighteenth meeting. Staff also recommends approval of Copper Creek, Section Three preliminary plat as it has received technical review committee approval. Of course, if approved tonight, Copper Creek, Section Three will then submit construction drawings and eventually a final plat. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have one, um-
Yes, sir.
Crazy question, but in the back back there, is this going to connect to, is it, is that Sunny Lane or whatever it called? Do it go all the way back to that part of?
It's close, so Sunshine Lane is terminated right here.
Okay.
Um, there is a ditch and blue line stream right here. And Sunshine Lane is actually not really a, a, a legal, uh, public road, so it, it is just a, it's kind of a private road with a name for, uh, uh, um, for emergency services purposes.
Yeah, I didn't, because we, we did approve, uh, property back there, correct?
That's correct. We approved, uh, property, uh, kind of a little bit closer to, uh, kind of where I'm pointing at right here.
Okay. I was just wondering, I didn't know whether it could be like an access road or, I mean, you know, emergency access.
Yeah, it would really have to be upgraded to a private drive if they wanted to add more, uh, lots back there.
Okay.
I'd have to look in the subdivision ordinance, how, how many they have now. We're getting a little bit into the weeds, but you can have four lots onto a private road and that's as many as, uh, our subdivision.
I was really talking about the access part of-
I got you. Yes, sir.
If we had to go in from a different route, that was the only reason.
Yeah, as of right now, there would not be access. Yes, sir.
That was my only question. All right. What is the pleasure of this board? For Copper Creek, Phase, uh, Phase Three?
Phase Three.
Is, is that right? Okay, copper.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion for approval of Copper Creek's, uh, Section Three.
Okay.
Um, preliminary area, flat, that has been reviewed and has received technical review committee approval.
So I have a motion by Councilman Moy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, have a second by Councilwoman Smith. Uh, is any discussion? If none, please vote by raising your right hand. Motion carry, motion carry, five zero. Thank you. Uh, Steven?
Okay, our next agenda item is Cornerstone, Section Two, Phase Three. The applicant is Stroud Engineering. Um, this is located in the existing Cornerstone subdivision off of Fire Tower Road. We do have the builder here if anybody does have any questions after this. Um, this site is at the end of Cornerstone Drive. It'll contain eleven new single-family residential lots on a three point three two acre site. This is zoned R six. This is the area that we are looking at tonight at the very back of Cornerstone that will add these eleven lots. I've overlaid the final plat just to kind of give a little bit of an idea where these eleven lots will sit on this plot. This is the final plat, um, on the screen as well. Planning and zoning board recommended approval of this final plat at their September meeting. It was a unanimous approval. Staff, uh, ha- also recommends approval of this final plat. It has gone through technical review committee and has received staff approval, so we recommend approval of this final plat. Are there any questions?
No, you said the developer is here.
The builder is here. Yes, sir.
Okay. Who, who, who is it?
Mr. Reggie Spain.
Okay, can you raise your hands? Okay, all right. Is that, this is going to close this out, correct?
This will be the last lot, well, there's some that haven't been, uh, built in the far, but it'll, it'll final plas- plat and create the last lots within the subdivision. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, with that being, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion we approve.
A second? I have a motion made by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilman Moy to approve, uh, Cornerstone, uh, Section, Section Two, uh, Phase Three final plat. Any discussion? If none, please vote, vote by raising your right hand. Motion carry. Thank you. All right.
Okay, the last, uh, new business item is Southbrook, Phase Two preliminary plat. Um, I've placed a preliminary plat at your seats as well. I want to say with tonight's, uh, rezoning being denied, we cannot approve this preliminary plat. And I'll go a little bit into the details of the preliminary plat first and explain why. So the applicant is Southbrook NC LLC, this is off of Church Street Extension and Lori Ellis Road. It's a two hundred and forty-five point four three acre site. In this phase, one hundred and ninety-four point nine five acres are in Phase Two. Uh, planning and zoning board approved the conditional zoning district of R six PUD and multifamily residential PUD at their January twenty-six regular council meetings. Um, this phase is showing three hundred and thirty-six single-family detached lots, ninety-eight single-family attached lots, uh, with an average, a total of four hundred and thirty-four residential units. Average lot size is eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one square foot. Single-family attached lots will feature two hundred, two thousand two hundred square foot. And within this preliminary plat, they are proposing eleven point four five acres of open space or recreational land dead dedication. Of course, we will have to review, uh, what is being supplied on the final plat to, to review what is available for recreation dedication. This is how Phase Two, uh, lays on the site, of course. Um, it is, it is very, uh, hard to, to look at it on that screen, so, um, the paper copy is a lot more clear. This is another, uh, image of the preliminary plat. This is zoomed in. And this is zoomed into the other area. So tonight, uh, we were reviewing the rezoning. One aspect of the rezoning was to include this area as single-family attached or multifamily residential. Since it was denied tonight, the plat does not meet the standards of the zoning ordinance and cannot be approved. Planning and zoning board recommended denial of the preliminary plat as it did not meet the zoning ordinance during their review. Now, they did have a caveat within their recommendation such that if town council did approve the rezoning tonight, then they, uh, they supported the approval of this preliminary plat. Um, staff recommends denial, um, because it does not meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. R six does not permit single-family attached and thus, uh, we cannot approve this preliminary plat because it does not meet the zoning ordinance, uh, or zoning district standards. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions for Steven. If not, uh, what is, well, we can't do anything. Can't do anything. All right.
You, you still want to make a-
Right, we still need a motion to deny. Got to reflect some-
Recommendation is to, to deny the, uh, the, the plat.
I make a motion that we will, uh, I make a motion to deny, to deny the plat.
Second.
That was presented to us tonight.
I have a motion and a second. Motion made by Councilman Moy, second by Councilwoman Smith, uh, to deny Southbrook, uh, Phase Two preliminary plat. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Um, when there is a denial, um, how soon can they reapply to be reconsidered?
So a preliminary plat itself, the zoning ordinance does not state a standard. Um, so they could revise the preliminary plat and resubmit. It would have to go through technical review committee first, um, but then it would go back to planning and zoning and town council. So there, to my knowledge, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that it does not state, uh, uh, delayed, uh, requirement for a preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. If there's no other questions, uh, if you please vote for the denial by raising your right hand. Three? Okay, all right. Oppose the denial. Raise your right hand. One, two, the denial, um, wins three, two. We get that done? Okay, all right. All right. Other agenda items?
Mayor, members of the council, before we get started, I tried to, and, and Dawn helped me with this, but I tried to at least address each other agenda item and then Councilwoman Hawkins, on your, your interview, um, Dawn pulled up each, by each month, each item we talked about, and I tried to put, uh, an update on those as well. So some of these, you'll see, I defer to the, uh, applicable person who will need to talk about it, but I just wanted to try to do this so you could take something with you as we make notes on where we stand on, on these items. So I hope it's helpful, um, and we'll certainly add to as we discuss these things.
All right, uh, other agenda items, other agenda items, accessory dwelling units, Councilwoman Smith.
And may I ask, was there a copy of it on our, at our places? I swear I saw it and now I can't find it.
No, there wasn't. I just handed it out.
Okay, all right. Um, so this is just to, to revisit, we had, um, residents come and speak, I believe it was in September, about, um, having to move in an elderly family member, something like that, um, in their detached. And we had a long conversation at that time about auxiliary dwellings and that we may need to visit our ordinances on this to, and to see if it is meeting the needs, especially now that we oftentimes have multi-generational homes and, and needs to take care of aging and sometimes young individuals. And I just wanted to, to make sure that, that we did come back and revisit that as we stated. Um, there were lots of suggestions and recommendations on that and I just wanted to see, um, and if it's in draft, I would like to see where it's at because I do agree that we need to be very cautious in this, that it doesn't become somebody's VBRO and we have all kinds of other issues. Um, but I do want us to, to take a look at that and I would like to see where we are in the draft form.
So if I could, uh, I think planning, the planning and zoning department has looked at this extensively and made some recommendations. Uh, I know Keen has looked at it. I am still looking at it. But this is going to, to sort of segue into parking regulations, which is further down in this list. It's going to address the usage of utilities. I think and would suggest that once staff review is complete, that council look to have a workshop on this item because I do think it's gonna involve more detailed conversation at a council level so that staff can really get a, a good idea of making sure that we're not passing something that's unenforceable. And I know you all don't want to do that either, but that it's going to affect many facets of what we already deal with on a regular basis. So that is my recommendation, that after the first of the year, we look at potentially having a workshop on trying to drill down into this to determine where we're going. But that is my recommendation.
Are we going to look at other towns and cities?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that's been done to some extent already, um, but certainly we'd want to go over that in addition to several other things.
And that kind of, part of that probably goes with item number two. You know, we had, we had citizens come and, and had concerns about parking on the street and one of the big concerns was eighteen-wheelers and there's some different things happening with that. But there were also concerns expressed about a lot of on-the-street parking in residential areas and if cars are parked on both sides, that it's very difficult for emergency vehicles to access. And it's also, I mean, if there's children, pets, people opening doors and you can't get down, um, if you're in town, you might can go a different route, but if you're in a neighborhood, you only have one route. Um, and I don't know what can be done there, but that was one of the things that was brought up with the on-street parking and that may also marry in with some of these other things that we need to look at.
Is it all right if I discuss that one simultaneously?
Absolutely.
So I have put a section at your seats, and this may have been what you were referring to, Councilwoman Smith, I'm not sure, of the section of our Town of Winterville Code of Ordinances regarding parking. And, uh, I will call your attention to what will be the third page of this four-page section and specifically subsection seventy-two point five, which deals with the parking of trucks. And currently, this is what's in our ordinance, is shall be unlawful for any person to park or cause to be parked, any truck having three or more axles, including tractor-trailer units, whether attached or disattached, that's different, upon any of the streets, public alleys, or rights of way within the corporate limits of the town. And then it gets into some exceptions with regards to loading and unloading, uh, cargo or passengers, temporary parking in cases of emergency, et cetera. So that's already in the book, on the books and, uh, I know that the police department regularly addresses those items when they are seen. So this only talks about the public vehicular areas though and does not address parking eighteen-wheelers on someone's own property, uh, which was the situation in the neighborhood. I think it's Blackstone?
Yeah.
Is that right? Which is, has been taken care of, at least for now. I do know that we have talked at various times, uh, historically since I've been here about prohibitions townwide, but also in specific areas with respect to parking on both sides of a town street. And yes, there are many places we could speak to where if cars are parked on both sides and there's cars aligned, it makes it difficult for one vehicle to get down there, it's close proximity, uh, but certainly emergency vehicles. That's a more global issue, obviously, in terms of how council would like to regulate on-street parking, if at all. But I would also suggest, um, that we need to get some additional direction from council on what you would like to see. And that's certainly a more global issue that could be affected by any accessory dwelling unit changes. Hope that makes sense.
So these are items that we can consider together. So these are items that we can consider together?
I think so. And would ask that when you are contemplating your thoughts about one, that you also contemplate your thoughts about the other, potentially. There are some neighborhoods that, there are areas where there's some really wide streets that exist, but I would say that's not the majority. I would say the majority of the streets, even though they're built to standards, but when you start parking on both sides, it could be dicey at times. So I do know that that's an item that lots of the public would have feelings about, and I know you need to take that into, to account. So I would suggest that we think about these collectively and also at a point in the very near future, maybe we can get some additional direction on how council would like to proceed forward on both of those items. But I definitely think a workshop is warranted if council agrees on at least the accessory dwelling ordinance.
We also need to look at the policy updates. Aligning the policy and the charter, the things that we discussed earlier that we need to look at.
Yes, I think we previously decided.
The staff was gonna do that. Yeah, yeah, we had that discussion. The next is, just to go back and address that it actually, it kind of aligns with what the Biscardi's brought this evening about our downtown area. Constituents have reached out to us about some concerns, I think this, and some of those of you who have been here a little while may have some background on it. I think there has been discussion in the past with our downtown area with the lights, which were very nice when they were put up, but they're now quite dim and, and have kind of outlived there, and I'm speaking of the direct decorative lights, and more so the, the, the markings on the pavement. I know that it's sometimes hard, especially if you're not from Winterville, to, once we moved to one-way streets on different, and the parking and the, and just being more clear, there, there are some things that can be done, I think, that would not be extremely costly, that will help support our small businesses like the constituents that came, our small business owners tonight, with parking, lighting, trash, things like that. This is something I think that has come up a couple of times, and if I'm not mistaken, has been discussed in past years with previous council, and it's probably something that we need to look at moving forward with. I know that we have directed staff to look at the cemetery and get that taken care of, and then maybe we can do some things with our downtown area.
Thank you. I'm hoping that we will have time during our vision setting meeting. That's an item that we didn't really get to discuss this past year, that staff would like to drill down into it with council to get a determination of what it is you all want to see, absolutely, what are wonderful ideas, and what we're gonna do is incorporate the market property overhaul into that as well. So, I mean, there's a site plan, it's been approved by council, we'll, we'll get that back out to everybody, but we'd like to have a discussion on where in terms of priority do you see this and what is it that you want. So I would like to, we haven't set a date for that yet, I don't think, for our vision setting. It's in the budget calendar, on the budget calendar, so.
They scheduled one, the latter part of January. And a tenet of second one, the first part of February.
Thank you, Donald, for keeping me straight. So if that's okay with council, if we can, plan to discuss that at our vision setting, I think we might can make some headway. I'm throwing out ideas, please let me know.
I think we need to do that in a separate setting, so our maidens are not so extensive.
Thank you.
All right. So did that take care of your all three of your topics, Ms. Councilwoman Smith?
It does.
Okay, all right. Next up is number four, is limited special occasion and special one-time permit process and Mayor Pro Tim Harrell has got it deferred to King, the attorney, town attorney.
Mayor Pro Tim, I just deferred to King because I felt like he could speak to the legalities of what's currently ongoing.
And that is great, he can speak to the legalities, but I can speak to the reasoning for me putting it on the agenda.
I, I, thank you. You know, as I think we've discussed at our last meeting, that the appellate hearing on this case is set for next week. So as that, there is a, I would say an investigation, a statewide investigation ongoing, or an investigation by the state, that, that involves our police department and the chief has been subpoenaed to that hearing next week. We typically don't, as far as it relates to the Corbella's matter, don't discuss those while there's an investigation open. If, if there's a discussion, I'm not sure the full scope of what's, there's something beyond that to talk about permitting process, be glad to see what we can, you know, do here at this time. I'm, I'm not sure, you know, where the, you know, where the focus is, I guess, for lack of a better way of putting it on, on this particular matter.
Thank you for that. And so my reasoning for putting this on the agenda is based upon concern, community members. It's important, important for citizens to have an understanding about these processes. I had no intentions on bringing up Corbella's. This is just to ensure compliance with local regulations and to facilitate planning of special events. And so I would like for us to either have a workshop or some sort of educational process for folks that are in the community who are asking these questions in lieu of, you know, said Corbella's by the attorney. So basically, the types of events that qualify for this permit, and yes, I know that this is on the website and things of that nature, as well as the recycling and so on and so forth, but we want to make sure, well, I know that I want to make sure that our town is inclusive instead of exclusive. So we want to make sure that we are educating our citizens on the type of events for this permit, the application process, including required documents and fees, because we want everyone to be successful. Any restrictions or conditions associated with this said permit? Also, the eligibility criteria for nonprofit and political organizations, steps involved in applying for this permit, and the scope of activities allowed under the permit and any relevant limitations. So again, it was not about said Corbella's in a legal way. This is for education for the citizens that have reached out, as you have brought up, due to Corbella's, but this is not about Corbella's. So Terry, if you, or town parker, manager, if you and staff could put something in place where we can have some sort of workshop or education, that is the reasoning for my agenda item.
I agree, and I was gonna say, I think it'd be important, first of all, that as a council, we have internal ourselves, so we can understand. So then we can explain to people as well, you know, before we have a workshop. We need to know what we're talking about in order to present it to the public. You, you see what I'm saying? You know, that's what I'm saying, wait, they can teach us what we need to be sharing with the public before we go out there and not present the right information. You see what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying. I also am asking that town, town manager, parker go and research, or I have contacts of folks that could come who have that specialization that could teach the public, because it is one thing for us to learn, but getting it second-hand knowledge from us is something different from inviting the public to this town hall to have education and therefore it should, it would not be, hopefully, any confusion or any allegations of, as you said, Corbella's with discriminatory practices.
I think that that would be a good idea. I, I've never been involved in an event that I had to do that, so I didn't even know if you could get a permit for like a weekend activity, you know, something like that. So I think that that will open the eyes, and we could invite the other businesses in our community to come and like, like Mayor Pro Tim Harrell said, they would get it firsthand.
So in clarity, I agree that because there are so many different kinds of applications and different kinds of events and types of permits, are we talking about, would you specifically like, I'll call it a town hall, for lack of a better word, or would you like staff to work directly with the ABC Commission to put together a packet? Or exactly how would you like to see that?
Both would be great.
Okay, got it.
You good on that one? All right. Next is agency assessment, Winterville Police Department, Mayor Pro Tim Harrell.
Councilwoman Harrell.
Oh, you steal.
You were still Mayor Pro Tim when I did this, Wes.
That's right.
So basically, for this right here, for the assessment of the Winterville Police Department, just wanted to make sure that we ensure that our local law enforcement agency operates at the highest standard and of professionalism and transparency and effectiveness. With all the said activities and things that do go on in our town, I'm just asking for us to reach out to the legal municipalities, even if we, if we have, if we have not, just give me an update because I'm not sure, getting the risk assessment regarding our local law enforcement agency, which is a free service because we are a part of the legal municipalities, correct?
Correct.
So just to make sure that we are following or evaluating areas of community engagement, operational efficiency, training and development, accountability and transparency, and then also resource allocation. Also, I would like to know if our police department is CLIA certified? We're not? So I would love for our staff, as well as town manager, to look into getting our police department CLIA certified because that speaks to efficiency and also just a better management of the police department.
So if I might, certainly will, have not, but we certainly will reach out to, to the league regarding their risk assessment. In terms of being CLIA certified, that is an accreditation of the department, and that's certainly one accreditation, the department in the most common. There's a lot involved in that and a department could certainly operate by CLIA standards or standards close to that without being CLIA certified. There is a lot of work and time and resources that go into getting CLIA certified. I am not suggesting that we do not, as a matter of fact, Chief Williams and I have discussed it. It was part of the process when we interviewed for chief of police, but having worked in predominantly smaller towns in eastern North Carolina, and that including Greenville, who is accredited, I should say. I have a good idea of what goes into that, so we will bring you back some information to let you know what that entails and the cost associated with accreditation, just so you have a sense of what's involved.
I have a great sense of what's involved.
I'm sure you do.
I have looked that up so we can all discuss it and move from there to talk about how to get our department certified. I think that'll be great. Thank you.
And just to add to that, town manager, parker, with regards to you researching that, is there a timeline in terms of when you will get back to council on agency assessment and/or any underlying factors that were just discussed?
I think I could certainly give you an update at our January meeting. Now, all items may not, I may not have definitive answers, but I'll at least have an update.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes care of that.
Yes, that takes care of it.
Okay, all right. Next up, we have updating citizen on the intersection of Mill Street and Boyd Street, Councilwoman Hawkins. And says defer Councilwoman Hawkins.
I did, I did defer to Councilwoman Hawkins and also denoted that Assistant Town Manager would ask to also give an update on this item.
Councilwoman Hawkins.
Sure, and as I just shared earlier, in terms of the intersection of Mill and Boyd Street, we voted on signalization, and then we were told that there needs to be a traffic count to see if it warrants a signalization. We said in lieu of that, or in the interim, that we wanted beacon flashing lights while we were in the interim. Receiving a report or a summary from Mr. James of NCDOT, who said that there was a, a traffic count done on November sixth, and then on November seventh, the very next day, there was a warrant assessment done to which we were not eligible. First, I want to thank Assistant Town Manager Bowers for working continuously, being a conduit in terms of communication and trying to find out information. We asked about it and maybe three to four days, we were told that a traffic count was done, and then the next day, an assessment was done, and it, it, we, it didn't warrant signalization. In addition to that, it would be a lot of money. We made a motion that if it was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that we were willing to pay it. And so when I received that information that it didn't warrant it, I wanted to actually see the traffic count and compare it and cross-check with Main and Mill. I was told that there is none, no, there isn't any traffic count available at Main and Mill, and that if we wanted to go back and have another traffic count, it may not be deemed to be warranted for the light that is there on that very busy two-way street that I will talk about parking in a minute, but the same flow of traffic goes down to Mill and Boyd. And if you, I don't know what time the traffic count occurred, but if you come outside any time between two and six, it is horrendous. So I don't know what kind of traffic count. So they don't have the one for Main and Mill. And then Assistant Town Manager Bowers, I was privy to this report as of this morning, and from what I see, the date, there's a date of October twenty-second and there's a date of November fifth, which doesn't fit any of the dates for a report given of, of an intersection of that concern. And, and, and I, I think there needs to be a recount, because if he said it's the sixth and it was done on the fifth, and then I see something which is a traffic count on October twenty-second, something is not right.
Sure, we'll be glad to get him to confirm what those dates mean and how that applies to the warrant study. I'd certainly be glad to reach out on behalf of the council and get clarification for that.
Sure. And again, I want to tell you, thank you. You have walked with me through this entire process. I've been asking about Main and Mill for months, and you, you know, you, you continuously, you reached back out to them. We went through a variety of motions and are we gonna do always stop? And we voted for signalization. We said that we would pay for it. He said it doesn't warrant it. He would suggest always stop sign or a beacon flashing lights?
My understanding was the, the beacon flashing light, so I'll step back a little bit and look at our, the resolution that was approved by the council was for flashing warning lights. And, and so he doesn't currently have a resolution from the council saying that they won't, the, so even though I requested it in an email, he doesn't have official request from the council to put the flashing stoplights. So they did deny the, they denied the flashing warning lights, and then that's when we put up the speed, the speed limit indicators to help traffic understand what the flow of, what their speeds are on Mill Street. to help traffic understand what the flow of, what their speeds are on Mill Street. So if the council would like the flashing stoplights, stop signals, signs on, on Boyd, then that would need to be a formal request since our previous resolution did not state it that way. So it would be about a point of clarification for NC DOT would be to, in order to get those installed, would be another resolution from the council. And so also, he indicated in the letter that, that they would not, if it would, that the town had the option to take over Mill Street as, as an option, which would be very expensive, obviously, if we wanted to signalize the intersection. Just be careful with that one, one, because of the cost and then two, that would also kill our chances with the Mill Street sidewalk project because then it would be the town's responsibility. So those were some of his other recommendations as well.
And so, and I don't want to take up a lot of time, we've been here, it's after 9:00, but this is very important. The flashing lights, warning, beacon, whatever the wording is, we can go back, that was in interim. That was something we were doing while, he said it's going to take four to six weeks and two to three weeks. And then all of a sudden, it happened in two to three days. So that was in, in an interim. Whatever resolution we need to do, I would caution the council when they're doing flashing lights, warning lights. If this is on the corner of Boyd and Mill, this, this is constant flashing in front of, you know, we want safety. We don't want a disco light in front of our house. This is too much. That was for interim. That is, and I'm not speaking to you.
I understand. I understand.
I'm just saying, the traffic count that warranted us not to have it, the dates are not right.
Okay.
They, he came up and gave me the, I don't know where he got those dates from. I would ask that we maybe table this or you get back with me. But the dates, he said, is not right. And so for me, that's void. That is not correct and we should not be going by something that happened two to three weeks before he said it did and a day before. I don't know where they came up with this. Also, with traffic counts, you have to put something across the road. And if this occurred for 11 to 12 hours, I'm sure Mr. Jesus would have seen it. I would have seen it and everybody else who's concerned. I don't know when this occurred, but I, you know, and I, I'm trying to be respectful in this process because NC DOT has helped provide safety measures. But we're not going to take a discount on Mill and Boyd Street. We're not going to do that without my strong voice.
And I'm not 100% sure on the technology used for the count. I'll be glad to investigate that a little bit more as well because they may, may use more of an AI type system now versus the, the old cords for traffic counts that we're used to seeing. So some of that stuff may have changed, but we can verify that as well, as long as those, as, as well as those dates on the report.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask that we actually table this to next month so that you can get the correct data, the correct data for the recommendation for us to not have signalization. In terms of Mr. James saying, oh, we no longer want Mill Street to be a part of NC DOT because we're asking for signalization, for me is a bit far-fetched. It, I mean, that, that is what he's saying and he said, I asked for that and how we could apply. There's no way that I'm asking for that. I never asked for that. I'm asking on behalf of safety and the people. We need something there. Flashing lights are not going to work. That's not going to work. When we come back, I'm advocating for always stop sign, whether it's voted down or not, because we need a light or something there. And, and we do have the radar, that has been helping. But if it's not consistent, it is not helping. Mill Street is constant. It's constant. And unless you park your car and go sit there or you live there, you will understand why we are amplifying what we said. And just like Mr. Glenn said earlier, one fatality is too many and we don't want to see that. Thank you.
I do have a question. Could you tell me the, what is the connection between, you said it would kill the sidewalk project or whatever?
So the sidewalk, if we were to take over Mill Street in order to signalize the intersection, then the, the funding that we are potentially to, to receive for the Mill Street sidewalk project is DOT money. So if it were, if it's not a DOT street, then the sidewalk will not go in unless the town paid for that as well.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Anthony, what was the total cost? Do you have found out what the total cost was in the light?
No, once it didn't, I mean, the estimate was, I think, $250,000 like ballpark, but that didn't include like any, if any utilities had to be moved or anything of that nature.
And the maintenance.
And, and the annual maintenance.
But we didn't check that out and we didn't.
We asked, but once he did the study and it come back that it didn't warrant signalization, he never gave us a price. Oh, you know, it never got, it never got refined.
And that study doesn't have concrete data. The dates are all wrong. So when he can come back, that the date is wrong that he sent. When we asked him for the traffic count and then traffic count, there's no traffic counts on Main and Mill, but there's a light there. I'm confused as to where did it go? Where is it? And I know there's some, there's something, there is documentation. By God, it's a light there. Somebody had to determine and that flow is coming, especially on the weekends, all day and night. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Black History Program, February, February 2025, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, so I would like to propose a Black History Program be held here in Winterville in upcoming February 2025. I would like this to involve the Winterville Human Relations Board as well as the Subcommittee of the Youth. I would like to propose that it is held in one of the facilities here in Winterville, namely the Community Room. Why is that important? That is somewhere that the Winterville Human Relations Board, the Youth Committee, can be housed for that program, invite people in and there is enough space for arts, crafts and/or cooking or serving food if that is deemed or, and/or if this proposal is made. This will increase understanding of cultures, multiculturalism, and just is a great way to celebrate Black History Month. That is my proposal and I'm ready to make a motion for that.
Are you making a motion?
I, I would like to make a motion that we have a Black History Program here in Winterville, namely in the Community Room to involve the Winterville, to be hosted by the Winterville Human Relations Board, the Youth Committee, and involve citizens that would like to be involved in the construction of the program.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Motion made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilwoman Robinson to host a Black History Program, February 2025, correct?
Right.
Right, all right. Any discussion?
Yes, you're going to come up with a date. A finalized date probably.
The next meeting, I will have a finalized date. I do not have, like, I can look at a date right now, but I would have to meet and communicate with the Winterville Human Relations Board as well as make sure that when we have youth involved, we get parental agreement as well as any other citizens who want to help to construct. So maybe by January, I would have a concrete date.
Councilwoman Hawkins will work in tandem with staff to make sure the Community Room is available.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else got any discussion? If not, please vote by raising your right hand. Vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Community Roundtable, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, I would like to ask that Winterville hosts a Community Roundtable. I did not want to do it isolated, outside of us as a council, but I feel like it is time, it is due. We had a town hall back in March due to me requesting a town hall to get the citizens into our town hall to ask question and just question and get to know our law enforcement as well as other staff and service personnel. We did have an okay turnout. However, I believe it is time to have another type of town hall, which is a Community Roundtable. It is no secret that right now, there is a climate in Winterville where there needs to be discussion and this is alliteration on my educator career. This is, we need discussion, dialogue to dispel divisiveness. We need to dig up any discrepancies. This is what we need and this is what I'm asking for. A said date as soon as possible. I can get in touch with Pitt Community College, I have it dated. But I would like for us to have a roundtable where we can discuss maybe two to three red button issues, namely our communications and connections with our law enforcement. We need our law enforcement to, I need the law enforcement and I know we all need our law enforcement, I value them. But it, we have to talk about some of, some of the negative things that are going on, some of the lack of communication and some of the need for us to build greater relationships. We, that as well as information, there is, we need more transparency in terms of the functionalities here in Winterville. Third, we had a recycle workshop. It wasn't a good turnout and I still hear concerns from our citizens. So I would like to propose a Community Roundtable where we can have a discussion and walk away better than where we are right now. And I'm making a motion for a Community Roundtable hosted by the Town of Winterville and/or if not the council, the Winterville Human Relations Board, because when it comes down to the core, we are all human and we need to be relatable.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, motion made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilwoman Dr. Harrell to host a Community Roundtable. Any discussion?
I have a question. Councilwoman Hawkins, is your motion specific as to whether council's holding it or the Human Relations Board's holding it, just so that you know how to, where, where the duties?
Thank you so much. So I brought it for the Town of Winterville to host it and that would fall on the council. However, I'm going to backtrack and have it hosted. I do not have the board here.
Sure, sure, sure.
So I cannot speak for them. I would like it held by the Winterfield Human Relations Board with the involvement of the council. It is very much needed, but the Human Relations Board is not here. So let me just then say, community, I make a motion for a Community Roundtable hosted by the Winterfield Human Relations Board contingent upon their, you know, their, you know, agreement to that.
Right, got it.
And then if not, the council.
So that's your motion?
Second.
Okay, all right, so.
Thanks.
All right. All in favor, vote by raising their right hand. Motion clear. And last, number nine, year-end review of other agenda items submitted by Councilwoman Hawkins in 2024, results and current progress. Councilwoman Hawkins.
I'm sorry, I just was going to preface the list. I did my best to denote kind of where we were. So if I stated what I thought the update was and then it comes down in subsequent meetings, I'd just say, please see previous update. So bear with me if the wording is not fabulous, but that's what I tried to accomplish.
Sure, and Town Manager Parker, Mayor Hines, Town Council. It is close to 9:30. Here we sit at the end of the year, December 2024. I came on this council like none other, right? I have been speaking and I have been putting things on the agenda the entire year. You will find 10 months' worth of me putting things on the agenda on behalf of the people of Winterville. I do not have time to go through this because we have a closed session. May I, may I say that we spent, I don't know how long, going through public hearings and exations, all kinds of stuff tonight, which is good business. And then we got to public comment and that was three minutes. Three minutes for the people of Winterville. Then we get to where I'm wanting to speak and talk about year-end reviews. I'm, I'm Town Manager Parker. I love the way you constructed this. I have already constructed something, but I'm going to ask that some of this be made public to, to our citizens. They need to see what has been spoken on behalf of them, what has been accomplished, what is still in process. By the time I go through this, it'll be 10, 10:30, you know, we got to get home. What I would say is that, a quote to summarize this and all that public, you will get this. A quote says, never mind your happiness, do your duty. Again, never mind your happiness, do your duty. And when I took this seat, never mind my happiness. Never mind who likes me, never mind who agrees with me. I'm doing my duty on behalf of the people of Winterville. And I hope that when you get this, you will see that I was down to business. Lastly, Ms. Brandy Daniels, I don't want you to think that no one is answering you and as Attorney Keen Lassiter has shared, Corbella's is in process of a hearing. What I want you to know is that this is something very heavy on us. We hear you. I don't want you to think it, it is not being addressed because there was no updates, but we hear you and that is on the agenda. And that is all that I have to say tonight for now. And that we can get this summarized for the people.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hawkins, may I ask a favor?
Sure.
Would you go through the year-end review notes?
Sure.
As I have presented them.
Yes.
At your leisure and get back with me if you see something that.
Absolutely.
But just to make sure that when we actually post this, that it's as correct as it can be.
Absolutely.
And I encourage the rest of the council to do the same, please, just to make sure that I am correct.
Yes, and, and I see a few things where, to be clarified. And so I will get back to you.
I did this in some haste. So apologize in advance if I didn't encompass everything, but yes, your assistance would be greatly appreciated.
And I just want the people to know that when serving on a seat from January to December, there should be some sort of year-end review, right? Our responsibility is to make sure the people of Winterville are being served. And so that is, that is why I did this. And so that is, that is why I did this, but we don't have time to go through it.
All right, thank you. Items for further agenda and future work sessions.
Mayor, members of the council, I think we covered several of these items for future. I would like to get together with Donald after the meeting and get a listing of those together, and we'll get those out to everyone just to make sure that we've captured all of the, you know, additional meetings and whatnot we proposed to have, if that is all right with council.
I would like to say, yes, that is great. If we could get those items before Christmas break, if you guys could get together and send us those items, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Donald, announce.
And Donald, when we get to Stormwater Committee, there is a change. I'm gonna provide you with that.
Okay. Have a few, because mostly we got some holiday announcements and everything in there. If you could, if you ever, if you, any of you have anything for the January newsletter, please get those to me tomorrow as soon as possible. Friday, December 13th, Cops Center Roof at the Walmart on Greenville Boulevard. This Saturday, December 14th, is our townwide Christmas activities with the parade at 2:00 PM, Christmas market from 2:00 to 6:00, and the tree lighting ceremony is at 5:00. Planning and zoning board is next Monday, December 16th. Board of Adjustment is next Tuesday, December 17th. Stormwater Advisory, Terry?
Yes, I think you have Christmas Eve as the date. And Cliff would like me to let you know that. That don't wait until you're coming. I think the proper date is December 17th, and the time is at 6:00 PM at the Operations Center.
I got one thing right out of that. So, the 17th at 6:00 PM at the Operations Center. I apologize for that. Please forgive me. There's so many this month. Coffee with the Cop will be on Friday, December 20th, at Cooper's Cup. And then the Christmas holidays, where town offices are closed, are Tuesday, December 24th. That's why I wanted to get Cliff at work that day. Wednesday, the 25th, and Thursday, the 26th. Recreation Advisory would have met on the 24th, and they have canceled. Human Relations would have met on the 26th, and that is canceled. Then we have the New Year's holiday. Town offices are closed on Wednesday, January the 1st. And then items for the January abstract are due Thursday, January the 2nd. And then you can see February of '25, I need those items by January the 8th. Agenda review meeting is January 9th, and the next regular town council meeting is Monday, January the 13th.
Okay, all right. Reports, so, attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The report, I would like to say that, thank the council for inviting me to your Christmas party last week. My dad fell on Tuesday, and I spent Tuesday night and most of Wednesday in the hospital with him. Good news is, he's doing well, a little banged up. But I honestly wasn't feeling all that great. I think it's because I didn't sleep any of that night, but I wanted to make sure I didn't bring anything to your Christmas party. But I thank you for that invitation. Also, on another good note, my daughter, my youngest daughter's graduating from East Carolina one semester early later this week, so.
That's great, good news.
Yeah, good news for the Laster family. I did want to point out that we do have a closed session. You've got one statute mentioned, one attorney-client privilege. Also, I think Anthony Bowers may have something to report to you, so that would be under the Statute A5 to direct town staff on negotiating terms regarding the purchase of real property. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Smith.
Just thank you to everybody who's still here for your stamina. Thank you to everybody who had input for the Christmas party for the town. Everything was very nice, enjoyed spending some time casually with everybody, and that's it.
Councilwoman Robinson.
I echo, we did have a wonderful Christmas event. We thank everyone who was there for it. I thank the historical society for their calendar this year and being so inclusive with it. We do appreciate that. I do want us to, I want to hear something about progress with the cemeteries, both cemeteries that we got going. And Councilwoman Hawkins, would you tell about the Human Relations? I'll leave that to you. Everybody have a safe and happy Christmas, and come back in the new year ready to go.
Mayor Proten.
Just like to say thank you, as always, to the staff, to the town council, most importantly, the residents and the citizens that are here, the ones that are online watching. Thank you all just for entrusting us, and want to make sure that we all understand the reason for the season. Want you all to have a wonderful, wonderful holiday, and thank you so much.
Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, I would like to say I enjoyed the Christmas party my daughter and I attended. That is our second year in a row. We enjoyed the food, the conversation, as well as the candy. I want to tell Mr. MacGuffin, as well as Mr. Bowers, thank you for always, you know, staying connected, whether we're here asking questions and/or making me laugh at the Christmas party or wherever else we are. I appreciate that. Sometimes it is not easy to make me laugh, but you all make me smile because I feel that you all are doing your best to get things across. I want to share that what Ms. Councilwoman Robertson just said. At the Winterville Human Relations Board, we are conducting the season of giving. We are specifying or focusing on our seniors here in Winterville. I am not going to reveal what we're giving them, but we are gifting them with something really wonderful that will actually warm their heart. So I would just say that. And I would like to thank Mr. Harvey for just riding this out with us the whole way. I appreciate him at the meetings because just as I am advocating now, I'm advocating in there at the Human Relations Board. Lastly, I want to just share again, as this was presented to me in January of 2024, as of January 2024, the Town of Winterville organizational chart. The citizens of Winterville are at the top of the organization, and everything that we do, we need to keep them in mind. We know that this is a unit, and we have to work together, but we have to keep the citizens of Winterville in mind and know that that is why I am up here, so that I can ensure that we are being held responsible for what occurs from our very newborns to our citizens that are now, I believe, 101 years old here in Winterville. Thank you very much, Merry Christmas. Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Boy.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank, I want to thank everybody for staying with us tonight as long as we've been here, ever since 6:00. And we cover a lot of things tonight, and thank you for being so patient with us. I want to thank the, our staff. You guys are great, guys and ladies and gentlemen, all of you all are great. Every department, thank you so much. And this council, thank you. We did a lot tonight, and we had covered a lot of ground. And I think at the end of the day, I think we're gonna be okay. Also, I'd like to say that tomorrow at, at 3:45, they're gonna, they have a groundbreaking ceremony at Christ Church on 746 Worthington Row. I think they're getting ready to build a elementary. I think it's tomorrow, what I have.
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Well, on my date, do anybody else have a date? That's what I have on my, on my calendar. On my, on my calendar is tomorrow.
It's on the 11th, yeah.
So it's next Wednesday.
No, it's Wednesday this week.
And that is Christ Covenant School, and they will have the groundbreaking.
At 3:45.
On the 11th.
On the 11th, thank you. At 3:45. You had the time right.
Right. All right. So I, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice, and they already have, I think they already have the high school there, and now they're getting ready to start the elementary school there.
One thing, since I had to pull out my calendar. From 12:00 to 2:30, there'd be a retirement floating reception for Ernest Lee at Pitt Community College. You know, he worked with the jobs program and training and everything. He's retiring. It's tomorrow from 12:00 to 2:30, it's floating.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, one more thing, and I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, and council, I'll be brief. Last quarter of this year has presented a few health challenges for me. I am happy to report that I am maneuvering through those, and hopefully on the upswing, but I just wanted to say thank you to council and to staff for getting it done when I haven't been able to be at certain things. I had no worries, I knew it was in good hands. I wanted to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season, and thanks to everyone for all you do. Thank you.
Not gonna be long, but first of all, thank you, Councilwoman, Dr. Randy Harrell, for being Mayor Proten this year. And Johnny, thank you, I'm welcome aboard, second term, Mayor Proten, coming on. And appreciate you picking up the mantle and taking off with it. With the book, yes, sir. But with that being said, I read this at the Christmas party, and I'm gonna read it again. And basically, it says, "I wish to convey my appreciation to the town council, which is up here, and along with Attorney Lassiter. This year has presented numerous challenges, and we have navigated through these obstacles. We have remained united, and we have been faced with difficult decisions. Yet we consistently polarize the best interest of our town. And once again, I'd like to express my gratitude to all of you, to staff, to the citizens of Winterville. Our jobs up here are not easy. Day to day, we're gonna cross people's path. Some are gonna be happy with us, some are gonna be unhappy with us. But you remember what you did, you took an oath. And, you know, that oath is to follow the Constitution. So with that being said, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and safe holidays. And as I said at the meeting before, loving your loved ones. Loving your loved ones. This is a precious times. I'm getting older. We all getting older. And as someone told me the other day, I asked him, I said, "How's your birthday?" He said, "Ask me next year." Because that means I'm here. With that being said, we got a closed meeting, and I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'm making a motion that we go in closed session.
I second.
Have a motion to go into closed session. Motion made by Councilman Boy, second by Councilwoman Robinson. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry. Let's move to closed session.